Aloha Pumia Nakakou. The October 25th, 2023 Neighborhood Board Number 34 Meeting is called to order. Welcome to our Makakilo Kapalei Honukai Halei Community Forum. My name is Anthony Makana Paris and I serve as your board chair. We are holding a hybrid meeting on WebEx and have community members online and in person at Kapalei Halei Conference Rooms A and B. Order and decorum. If you wish to speak, please raise your in-person hand or your virtual hand and wait for the presiding officer to recognize you before speaking. Please introduce yourself and only address your comments to the chair. If I miss any hands in person, please get the attention of your nearest board member or our Neighborhood Board Assistant Logjam Hutchison, so that he can communicate to me through the chat. So on WebEx, so that I can make sure we get you in the queue. Speakers have three minutes to comment on any items. Those giving reports this evening may take 10 minutes, not including Q and A. And the presentations are available and circulated in our online cloud drive. The link's available at the top of your agenda. Please remember to silence any and all electronic devices to keep yourself muted when you're not talking on WebEx. Also, remember again to introduce yourself for the, it really, really helps with record keeping to make sure that we put the appropriate comment that I'm on with the person that's providing it to our community. This is our community forum, so everyone is asked to engage with the spirit of aloha. Be free to vigorously debate the agenda items. Remember to treat each other with respect, especially when you're passionately advocating. And let's honor each other by keeping to allotted times for speaking and collectively finish our forum in a timely manner. Are there any questions? Seeing no virtual hands or in-person hands, I'll ask our Neighborhood Board Assistant to do roll call.
Bosler? Dudley? Ferrera? Kahela?
Hayo?
Con?
Here.
Lindstone?
Do.
Singleton? Tala? Harris?
Yo.
We do have a forum at this time, Chair, with seven of nine members present.
Awesome. Thank you very much. And we go to our city monthly reports, starting with Honolulu Fire Department.
Aloha. Firefighter Gino Mosiako out of East Kapalei Station, 43. Incident statistics for the month of September. Fires, structure two, wildland brush 11. Nuisance, which is fires, including rubbish fires outside a structure or vehicle, 12. Cooking fires, zero. Activated alarms, 10. For emergencies, medical, 175. Motor vehicle collision with pedestrian, two. Motor vehicle crash collision, 11. Mountain rescue, zero. Ocean rescues, one. Hazardous material incidents, four. Our fire safety tip, our fire prevention month. The National Fire Protection Association sponsors Fire Prevention Week, which is observed from October 8th to 14th, 2023. As a national campaign is promoted throughout the month of October, this year's theme is cooking safety starts with you. Pay attention to prevent fire prevention. Did you know cooking fires are the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries? Unintended cooking is a leading cause of cooking fires and deaths. What can you do? The good news is you can prevent most cooking fires and burns. Help keep your family safer with these simple but effective tips. One, turn pot handles toward the back of the stove. Two, always keep a lid nearby when cooking. If a small grease fire starts, slide the lid over the pan and turn off the burner. Three, watch what you heat. Set a timer to remind you that you are cooking. And four, have a kid or pet friend zone of at least three feet around the stove and areas where food or drinks is prepared or carried. That's all for our statistics. Any questions?
Mahalo for your report. Are there any questions from fellow board members for Honolulu Fire Department? Any questions from the community at large? Seeing none, hearing none, thank you very much for your service and that amazing tip on cooking.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay, mahalo. Let us welcome up now Honolulu Police Department.
Aloha. Sergeant Pumi Moroko with Honolulu Police Department District Committee Community Policing Team. Board members and community, I have the crime stats for September of 2023. In our district, motor vehicle thefts, we had 22. In our area, there was eight burglaries, 30 total in our district, of which our area, there was five. Thefts, 130, of which in our area, there was 47. Unauthorized entry into motor vehicle was 26 in our district, of which five was in our area. Speeding, 19 citations. Moving violations, 280. Parking violations, 95. Total citations, 394. Photo calls for service in our district was 7,513. And Kapalei had 2,204. One tip for this month is Halloween is coming up. Small children should be accompanied by an adult or a parent or responsible adult. When the children bring back their candy, prefer to have them checked if there's any suspicious candies. Should report that to 911 and make sure there's no foreign objects in the candy and things like that. That's all I have for now. Any questions?
Mahalo for the report. Are there any questions from fellow board members? The chair goes to Board Member Moon Kahela first. If you could unmute yourself, fellow board member Moon Kahela.
Thank you, Chair, for your thorough police report. I noticed the posting of speeding VASCAR radar on Kapalei and Kamaaha has come to a nil. Hardly see anyone out there. And it probably is a, it's a contribution to being shortage on officers. Is that correct? Or is there a change of areas where radar, I guess, operations is being changed? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Sorry, is that our Traffic Division officers? Is that what you're referring to?
I guess, sir, they post themselves on Kapalei Parkway, you know, east and west, as well as Kamaaha, east and west direction. I haven't been, hardly been seeing any of your, you know, about east finest out there for the past couple of weeks. And the reason why I say that, because a lot of kids walking across the street from Kapalei High School. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. So I believe as far as the Traffic Division, their placement is based on requests from government officials, elected officials, and the public. So if you would like more coverage in our district, then you can request that on HonoluluPD.org or the city website and it'll get routed to the police department. And also, the district would take note of that and the patrol officers would also try to concentrate on that area for speed enforcement.
Mahalo. Are there any other questions from fellow board members? Hearing or seeing none, are there any questions from the community at large? Hearing or seeing none at this time, mahalo aloha for the report and we appreciate the tip given the upcoming holidays.
Thank you, Chair.
Let us welcome up now the Board of Water Supply for their monthly report, not to be mixed up with their wonderful presentation that we'll be having from them in later on this evening.
Aloha, Chair, Board, President and guest Nicole Radwell from the Board of Water Supply. There were no water main breaks in the Makakilo Kapalei Honukai Halei area in September. So we just have a quick announcement tonight. We have officially launched our annual poster and poetry contest. So this year's theme is "Our Water, Our Home." The poster contest is open to students in grades K through six and the poetry contest is open to students in grades seven through 12. The deadline to enter is February 28th, 2024. And for more information, we invite people to go to www boardofwatersupply.com/wcwcontest. And if there are any questions or concerns about anything related to Board of Water Supply, I'm happy to take those back.
Mahalo for the report. Are there any questions or concerns from fellow board members to the Board of Water Supply at this time? Are there any questions or concerns from the community at large? Seeing and hearing none, you're off the hook. They might have more questions after the presentation this evening.
Mahalo, Chair.
Mahalo. Awesome. Now let's go to Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative. It's Director Keet Suzuki with us this evening, or another representative?
My name is Keet Suzuki and the Deputy Director for the Department of Land Management. Before I forget, let me give my report on the ridership for the skyline. I looked it up and for September, it's 91,088 riders. Just to give you some context, in August, it was 96,178. And of course, in July, it was quite large, 151,633. Then going on to some of this month's highlights from the mayor. The, I guess, the first one is the mayor's stance on the ACLU lawsuit. The ACLU lawsuit seeks to prohibit the city from enforcing public welfare laws and take away the city's ability to enforce laws that protect and safeguard the public. The city disagrees with the ACLU's lawsuit. Homelessness is a complex and pressing issue that affects all. So the mayor wants to assure everyone the city is committed to addressing the issue with compassion and empathy and will focus on finding long-term solutions. Safe and Sound WITI initiative marks its first year. The, there's a trio of affordable housing updates. September was a busy month when it comes to the city's plan to help facilitate the creation of new affordable housing units. There are three projects that we're currently working on. Well, actually, there's a lot more, but the three projects that were sort of made the news in September are Parkway Village in Kapalei, Kihaipai Place in Kailua, and Halei Waolu in Chinatown. And then the last highlight is Oahu's parking meters are now being upgraded all across Oahu. The city's credit card-friendly on-street parking meters have been upgraded to better serve the public. These 4G connected parking meters were modernized to allow users to pay for parking safely, securely, and quickly. And by the end of the year, many of the coin-only meters will be upgraded to the new system. My homework from last month. The first one dealt with IES Island Energy Services. The question that was posed to DPP was with respect to the Kapalei field tanks. The Makakilo Neighborhood Board has inquired if this project was granted the permits without coming before the board to provide notice, as other projects are required to do. If not, what was the reason? Any information about the history of events regarding this project is greatly appreciated. The response from DPP is as follows. On November 18th, 2002, a waiver was issued to allow five US Navy fuel tanks to exceed the 60-foot height limit by 10 feet. A minor modification to conditional use permit was issued to Island Energy Services downstream to allow the fuel tanks to be placed within the boundaries of their petroleum processing facility on a 228-acre site. This was issued November 18th, 2022. On March 30th, 2023, another waiver and minor modification were issued to allow more, one more storage tank that would exceed the height limit by about four feet. Waivers and minor modifications do not require a Neighborhood Board presentation prior to submittal of the permit application. The project site is not in the SMA, so no SMA permit was required. The second question was with respect to Parkway Village. Were the necessary permits granted to the project at Parkway Village without the requirements of other projects to present to the board? If so, what was the reason? Any information about the history of events regarding this project is greatly appreciated. The DPP contacted us and they asked for an extension to answer this question. They need a little more time to do some research. The third question dealt with Makakilo Drive Extension. The request was sort of very frustrating, but due to the catch-22 situation the extension is currently in, can the mayor request a streamlined rubber counters of the vehicles on Makakilo Drive from H1 to the first stoplight on Makakilo Drive? In order to get updated numbers to both of the case, we're getting the extension done, restarted. The current statistics available for Makakilo Drive are several years old and outdated. The response, which is not satisfactory, but was received by me at 4:00 PM this afternoon, is that the Makakilo Drive Extension project is currently not on the STIP/TIP. I'd like to lump my response, my personal response to number three with number four. Number four dealt with an emergency road. In the event of an emergency, are there contingencies for making an emergency access road from Makakilo Drive or any other, any of the cul-de-sacs to the west to allow access to Koala Kai Parkway? The Department of DEM, Emergency Management, said, "We'd like to ask for an extension as we are still waiting on some information for other departments to respond to the start." Responding personally to items three and four, I sat in on a wildfire management work, working group meeting that we had last week, I think. And I, I hope that this gives some context, but I believe that my recollection was that the Makakilo concerns about fire were top priority in the minds of the mayor. No other project on this island was discussed as much as this area's, Waina, Nanakuli, Makakilo. The concept of the extension of Makakilo Drive is complex. And so I don't know, but it was discussed quite a bit and personally by the mayor. With respect to other emergency roads, I do know that the working group discussed it and is looking very hard at that issue. I think it's going to take some time, was my general takeaway from the working group. But I can tell you that it was my understanding that this was really important to the mayor and to the working group in general. And they're very aware of the situation here. So if that means anything, I just wanted to share that with you as I participated in that working group. The last item was with respect to scheduled maintenance plans. A resident requested a scheduled maintenance plan be made available to the public for things like clearing of dry brush, median trimming, sprinkling, routine maintenance, so that, so that way, community members do not feel the need to bother the necessary departments at every meeting with requests that may already be scheduled or upcoming. DFM responded as follows. "DFM is working toward further developing its website available to the public to include groundskeeping, landscaping, sprinkler work. In the future, further upgrades will include sidewalk repair work, major signs and markings projects, and major road repair projects. Currently, stream maintenance and stored property and sidewalk nuisance ordinance enforcement schedules are available to the public on the website, HTTPS, colon backslash backslash www honolulu.gov/dfm." That's my report. I am available to take back any questions or requests that you may have of the city.
Thank you very much for the thorough report and doing the wonderful homework. Director Suzuki, are there any questions or concerns from our community members at this time? Chair recognizes Mick Ferrer.
Hi there. Readdressing the Makakilo Drive Extension. The taxpayers have paid RM Towel many millions of dollars to work on this design and also to work on the redesign. And I think it's time right about now, or probably a year back, we need to get Mr. Morton from City and County Transportation and somebody from RM Towel to come to our Neighborhood Board and give us a report as far as the progress of this design and to give us pointedly what the delays are. It doesn't take that long to do that. And I'd like to make a formal request to get these gentlemen to come to our meeting and to address us on the Makakilo Extension. That's point number one. The other thing that I've got is, is that road that's going back that connects the road that runs in front of Kapalei Parkway going out to Koalina, is that a city and county road? That's a question I've got. Yeah. I believe it is. And I see they're getting ready to pave that extension going out to Koalina. And there's already an entrance to Koalina going in the main entrance. So I'm wondering how this project is getting funded. The Koalina extension, when actually the Makakilo extension is probably in line first. Those are the two things that I would like to know. There's a third issue. And this is going to take some homework. I'd like to know, the board would like to know, how much the city is paying for water monthly to water the divider on Makakilo Drive? And I'd also like to know how much, I don't think they had, they had a contract for some people to maintain it. And I know it ran out a couple of years ago, and so the city's been maintaining it absent somebody who would take the contract. I would like to know how much that contract is to maintain the divider on Makakilo Drive. The reason why I want to find this out is because, you know, I drive up and down it every day and I see that it's, the sprinklers are working, but they're working in a limited manner and you're seeing these big tufts of grass and then you got it all surrounded with dead grass. I'm thinking at some point in time, looking at the cost of water and the cost of maintenance of the Makakilo Drive divider, that it might make better sense to put in artificial turf. And there's some in several different areas. That's my, my third thing. I'll, I'll take up the issue next month of rumble strips and speed tables. But those are the two things for now. I want to know how much water, how much the money is we're spending for water for the Makakilo Drive partition or whatever that is, the divider, and how much the, the monthly maintenance contract is worth? Because I know the city's taking care of it, but at some point in time, they're paying contractors to take care of it. And those are the two things I want to know, because I want to do a study to see how we might be able to save money and make that divider look a whole heck of a lot better. Saving water and the danger of people working on it when they do go to cut it and being able to beautify the center of it with something as an alternative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Is that fellow board member Amy Bosler?
Yes. So I had a question about the Makakilo extension and area as well. Will you be able to follow up with that? The first response about the getting additional data on the amount of traffic?
Yeah.
So that it's not just going to linger, they're not going to wave, but you need an extension. Thank you. And then as far as the emergency road for Makakilo Drive, I appreciate you saying that the mayor did care and it was, it was discussed extensively. Could you find out what their action plan is or what their next steps are? Because it's wonderful to talk about it and say you care about a problem, but we need to know how they're going to make it better. Because every time we drive by this road, I think about Lahaina and one spark and thousands of people are cut off with nowhere to go.
Yeah, I, I'll try to report back as much as we can. I got to, the working group just started. And I honestly, I don't know when we'll really have some concrete things, but.
Maybe if we have regular encouragement to make a plan on, okay, if we cannot get access to these roads, well, what can we do to protect all of these, this whole community of people?
The Chair recognizes fellow board member, is that Michael? Where is that?
Lindstone.
Oh, Mikiela Lindstone.
Sorry, I'm not going to give you more homework. Just a comment, Chair. Figured there was a waiver. But when all the, the fuel tanks come in, all this fuel to our community and no community presentation, no community communication, because there's a waiver. You know, so many questions come up, like why? Breeds are required to come before neighborhood boards. But fuel, oh, you get a waiver. Right? You know, super disappointing and you know, how do you expect to gain trust from a community if you just keep waving the community off? Not more homework for you, just a comment. Mahalo.
Chair recognizes my sure Dr. Kiyomi Tatmi.
First of all, I'd like to say you do a great job. It's good to have you with us. Just a comment about the, to Mick Ferrera's concern. It was the Palihua Community Association, the Community Association for the Upper Part of Makakilo, that used to have the contract for the Makakilo Drive median. I'd like to also just make a comment. I, I'm not really sure what we're talking about, about an emergency exit. But at the bottom of not Makakilo Drive, but the next street over, where Thad lives, right next to Thad's house, there used to be a drive up to the, when the golf course was there, there was a clubhouse sitting on the hill. There was, as you went through that gate, there was a connection between that area and the lower road coming up to the quarry. And that, that really could be looked into as an emergency exit.
Is that the grease specific?
Yes.
Yeah, it was specifically mentioned, so it is being looked at.
Okay.
Yeah.
So a connection of the Makakilo area to that quarry road, right?
I didn't get all the specifics, but that gray specific quarry, when you mentioned quarry, possibility is something that the city was discussing.
Good. The last point is, besides the bushes in the median, I'm noticing the road has an awful lot of large bumps now. Every few years, the tree roots kind of come up under the road and raise it, and there are places where there are no trees around, but we've got the bumps, and there are more and more and more bumps to where, you know, it's it's really quite quite amazing how many bumps there are going up and down Makakilo Drive. So somebody could look into that. Thank you.
Or are there any other questions or concerns from fellow board members? Seeing them, thank you again, Director Suzuki. I would like to follow up with a couple of items. One is regarding island energy fuel tanks in which you mentioned the waivers were granted. Can we get a copy of the waivers so that we can upload it to our cloud drive, so we can share what was actually granted in specific? And secondly, I would like to inform the board and our fellow community that Melody Aduhua with the Red Hill Citizens Advisory Task Force and did reach out to me to coordinate for presentation by them and the appropriate military liaison in order to share about the defueling that will be happening from Kapu Kaki onto the Campbell area in our community. So the request was made, and they will be providing a report hopefully at our December meeting. And the next element, Director Suzuki, for your report was regarding Parkway Villages with the Kobayashi Group. So thanks to the help of the Governor's Office and Uncle Board in Pang, we were able to identify in 2019 that they did come before the neighborhood board, and subsequently in 2020, there was an adoption of support of the project where I voted five to two. And I will make those notes available for the community and for my fellow board members. And I did contact the liaison from Kobayashi Group, Elton Wong, and he did indicate that that the Kobayashi Group would be more than happy to give an update on Parkway Villages as they continue to communicate what's going on in the project development and to address any concerns that we have here at the board and from our community at large. So the Kobayashi Group was definitely responsive in wanting to make sure that our concerns were addressed. So Director, if we could follow up on the questions and concerns, and then if we could circle back offline to see how we might be able to coordinate with the the Mayor's Office and the military liaison for the communication, so that we're on the same page, hopefully on the presentation in December, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Awesome. With that, we would like to welcome our councilman. Oh, before that, I see a community hand up from Uncle Patrick Watson.
Chair Paris, and yeah, just a quick comment for Mr. Suzuki about the Makakilo issue. The Pu E Onani street is the one that we were talking about making it an emergency access point. So I went up there, I talked to some of the neighbors in that area. I didn't see that up there, but I talked to some of the folks up there, and one of the guys said that he actually knew one of the workers that used to kind of go through that gate often, and he actually had the key to the gate at one point in time. I was allowed to go through there. I don't know if he was allowed to go through there, but he had access, and he's driven up and down those roads in a pickup truck. And he said that, you know, there's the road up that Dr. Dudley was talking about that was to the golf course. He was going back and forth there, because when they closed the golf course, they were getting rid of the plants, so he was able to get a bunch of plants for free. But he also went down, and I remember Councilmember Tupola having that meeting, the community meeting with Roger Morton and John Nuuchi, and they were talking about the fact that that road wasn't accessible because it was too steep a grade. But this guy was going, I was going up and down on my pickup truck all the time, and it wasn't a problem at all. Whereas Director Morton was saying, oh, it's just the gray specific trucks are only able to go up there, and they have to maintain a certain level of speed to do that. And this guy's like, no. So anyway, I wanted to bring that issue up because it seems like I'm standing there looking at this gate going, if that's the only thing preventing us from using it as an emergency access in case of a fire, that's ridiculous. That's, this doesn't make any sense. So I just wanted to bring that up, because if this guy had a key, could get in and out very easily, can get up and down that road, then why in the world doesn't the community have access to it in the event of an emergency, or at least a plan in place? Because we're seeing what's happening with Lahaina, and like, oh, we had all these plans that were supposed to happen that never happened. So if we just got to keep making noise now to make sure people survive, then I'm going to keep doing that, because the other thing is at the end of Makakilo Drive, where it dead ends right now, I went, I walked around the ridge right there where the fire recently took place, you know, like September 5th, I think it was. And had the winds gone the other way, had it been more urgent, it would, you know, be exactly what we're talking about. This emergency would have taken place without a plan to get people out of there. So I'm kind of adamant about this, because it seems real simple. I know it's not, but like, open the gate, you know, let people through. That's my comment, Mahalo.
Mahalo, community member Patrick Watson. Chair recognizes board member Mick Ferrer.
I keep seeing a common thread kind of going through here when it comes to second-class city, I mean, second city. And Roger Morton seems to be the sticking point in in all of this. When we had our crosswalks removed, it was Roger Morton who told us we couldn't have them back because his complete streets report said that we didn't need them. It's been Roger Morton who says that we can't have speed tables or rumble strips, and it's Roger Morton who, in the Civil Beat article that came out, said it was going to cost $200 million to build the Makakilo Extension. And that's nowhere close. It's more like 98 million. And on top of that, we've got federal funds. And now we have Roger Morton saying that we can't have access to a road for evacuation. Roger Morton has more derision to lay on us and more reasons why we can't do things here. And we need somebody there who can find a way to make things happen. And all he's got to do is tell the the mayor, oh, we can't do it because of blah, blah, blah. And to see him quoted in Civil Beat as saying it's going to cost $200 million to put in such a small extension of road, it isn't a very large extension, is outrageous. And I really think he is doing all he can to keep the Makakilo-Kaple area from making too much noise. I think he comes across with a lot more authority than he should have. I work with the State Department of Transportation, Ed Sniffin, and a few other people in my employ, and I think on the city side, we're getting fed a lot of no, we can't do this because of that. We can't do that because of this. And when I go down to Target and I see this huge road going between that shopping center and going out to Koalina, which is a heck of a lot longer than the Makakilo Extension, I have to ask why we are being treated like second-class citizens out here. And I think Roger Morton seems to be the problem that's keeping 20,000 people up on this hill from being able to make any progress. And I really want to take a closer look at Roger Morton in seeing that we need to go a different direction, and I don't think Roger Morton's going to take us there. Thank you.
Mahalo, fellow board member Mick Ferrer for your mahalo. Are there any other questions or concerns from the community for the Mayor's Office? Any more homework to give Director Suzuki? See, now, thank you very much, Director, for all of your hard work and giving us the information that you're able to, and your willingness to work with us to figure out what we can do as we move forward together to make our community a better place to live. With that, let us welcome our council member, the Honorable Andrew Tuba.
Aloha, Chair, aloha, board members. Thank you for having me here tonight. I want to just kind of tag on to a little bit of what Miss Board Member Ferrera was talking about. So I did send out, again, the Makakilo Drive Extension Town Hall notes and to Logan. So Logan, if you could disperse that, because I actually didn't give an electronic copy. Last time I came, I had a paper copy, so some might not have seen it. But a few sticking points, some things I agree with, some things I don't. So first off, the first amount that was given to RM Towel was 3 million. And that was given to them to do the scope of how much it would cost to do that extension, which I agree with Board Member Ferrera. It's a short amount of road, but they were suggesting to build a bridge, so like heighten it and build a bridge over to the freeway. So that cost, from what I remember, was the 200 million. And then when they they said the bridge was too costly, they said, we'll do a fill. So they were saying, we'll just fill and then build over it so that we're not actually building pillars, right? So RM Towel got another 1.5 million, and they decreased the cost of it down 35 million. They said we'd save a lot by doing this. But then when the final EA came out, they found a Waiaulea historic preservation piece. I don't know how a Waiaulea ditch piece gets in Makakilo, but they said that Shipti stepped in. Shipti said, this needs to be preserved. And so in the past, Shipti would always allow for a preserve and fill. That means that you preserve the item, you can fill over it, you don't touch it. So when Shipti said, okay, we're not going to allow preserve and fill because the NHO, a native point organization, opposed it, after that, the EA that was done already by RM Towel, so they finished it, sat in Federal Highways Division, because they said, we're not going to approve it because the preserve and fill is not going to be allowed, and it got taken off the stip tip. So just a little thought for you, Board Member Ferrera, is that the Federal Highways Administration does have the completed EA, we don't. And the reason why you can't give it out is because without their approval, the EA is not approved. So they can't distribute the EA because Federal Highway said the preserve and fill is not going to work, and you guys fell off the stip tip. We're not going to approve this, and we're not going to give it out to the public. So it's a thought, right? They could come in. Another thought, because I just went to Koli Koli Pass yesterday. So we did the Koli Koli Pass tour with the military, and for White and I, that's our only access road out. When we've had fires, downpours, shooting standoffs, flooding, the only way in and out for people to go was through there. And so in 2001, the city couldn't build another access route into White and I, so they did the emergency access routes that are parallel to Farrington. So to Mr. Watson and to yourself bringing up, Mr. Dudley bringing up these the emergency access routes, there's only one of the five that's set to open permanently. All the rest of them stay closed unless there isn't emergency, and then they're open so that we can go around Farrington, because Farrington's right along the beach, meaning that if that ever got flooded, or no one would be able to move around. And White and I is up around 60,000 people. Makakilo Drive is 20,000. So both really do need emergency access routes. And I would say that for Mr. Watson's comment, I think it is true that it's kind of an assumption that a grade is too steep without actually knowing that or having an engineer say that it's too steep. So I think that's a valid way to push forward, is to try to continue to talk about that all areas such as White and I, which we need an emergency access route, you guys need an emergency access route, that that's all standard protocol to always have an exit point. So real quick, I'll go back into my report. I do have a GIA Town Hall next Thursday, 6:00 PM. For anyone who has a nonprofit, you're thinking about applying for the city GIA, which is going to open and have duration of, I think, a few months of people to submit applications. We'll be going over everything that's required for qualifications, how they do the point system, and who's awarded GIAs. I just was in Nimitz, so we did some outreach at where were we? Coral Sea, so in Kalailoa area this morning. Thank you to Aloha Animal Outreach that came out there with us. Whaniko's Comprehensive Health Center was out there with us, as well as In Touch, which gave out free cell phones. So for Board Member Mikiella, just letting you know that our main homeless provider, Achieve Zero, closed their doors a few weeks ago and said that they were going to discontinue serving homeless. So we actually stopped our outreach because we had no one helping us. Then seven days later, they said they're going to reopen their doors, but they had already let go a bunch of workers. So we're trying to sit down with Partners in Care and ask who exactly is over homelessness in Kaple now that we don't have a solid organization? So we're still kind of going back and forth in between that. I don't have any updates for any board members about Kaple Regional Park, because the main parks guy at the city actually retired. His name is Lewis. And so we've been trying to follow up with a lot of you guys' requests, but they are trying to reconfigure and put someone in his spot so we can have another supervisor again. And unfortunately, I did call DTS, and we don't have any updates about the R-Cut, besides what I said last month. So I do have my staff member, Kika. She's there in the meeting with you guys. We gave out a flyer for two things. One, I introduced two bills, Bill 57, Bill 58, about game rooms. So if you could please take a look at that. In 2020, one of the game rooms that we closed down was in the Kaple Homestead. And that was actually a DHHL property, so we had to do a lot of like maneuvering with the department in order for that to happen. The Town Hall, where we're going to sum up where we're at with game rooms and how many are open in our communities, will be on December 5th in White and I. Everyone is invited to attend. That's my report, Chair. Thank you so much.
Mahalo Nui Lo for your thorough report. Are there any questions or concerns from our fellow board members for the Honorable Councilwoman? Seeing no board members, community members, questions, concerns, Chair recognizes community member Patrick Watson.
I think you're muted.
Yeah, if you could kindly unmute Uncle Patrick.
I'm so sorry, so sorry. Mahalo Chair and Mahalo Councilmember Tupola. The question is, where is that Town Hall meeting, December 5th, taking place?
It's going to be at Ark of Safety in the White and I Mall.
Okay. And the second question is in regards to the homeless and the outreach and the closing and the reopening of Achieve Zero. Because I know Nikki and I know that organization pretty well. So the current status is that they're reopening, but they don't have enough people to facilitate the work in Kaple only, or is it because I know her territory is from like Ieah to North Shore, right?
Yeah, I talked with Partners in Care about the fact that their area scope is huge. I mean, they have Wakiwaka, they have Pearl City, Waipahu, they have Kaple. So I think we need to redraw the lines first. Secondly, to your question about are they only deficient in Kaple, I'm not sure. I do know that when they reopened their doors, they didn't have all the funding that they needed, so I'm not sure how many staff positions they have right now.
Okay. And I just had one image I would like to try to share regarding homeless encampment, if I may, Chair. Okay. Let me try to do this. Can you see this? Are you able to see the image of the tents?
Coming up. This is Patrick Watson starting to share content, so let's give it a few seconds, but feel free to continue the description.
Well, okay, so this is an image taken from in the Evile area where I currently work, and it's an encampment, and the tents for the homeless go from the building face to the edge of the sidewalk where the curb hits the street. And I'm just wondering, like, when does this stop? You know, like with the ACLU issue and the way that the homeless in this particular area, because all the social services are located here. How do you think we might best address this issue from your perspective? Because I know you've been super active with the homeless and I just, I've seen like little signs of it coming to Kaple, like tents. There was one. You know, oh, there's an approval. Okay, so can you see the picture now?
Not yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so I'm getting all kinds of messages that says Chair Anthony Paris in control. So I don't know what's happening, but anyway, to summarize, the picture is of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven tents that are stacked side by side, and they completely obscure the sidewalk. And so when I attended the Chinatown Neighborhood Board meeting, some of the community members there are saying that we can't pass, we're trying to go to the Salvation Army, because it's next to the Salvation Army building, and they can't take their walkers, they can't make their way through there, and the homeless are threatening them and telling them to walk in the street. So what's your perspective of how to best address that? Because I've talked to the police and they go Because I've talked to the police and they go, you know, it's pretty, pretty frustrating because we get called, we go chase them out, they come right back. And, um, is there anything that you might recommend?
Well, I'm a, I'm a believer in the process that I'm using because we've seen it work. It's called Restore, Reconnect, Revive. And the, the point of the program is to restore public spaces. So what I've tried to convey to the mayor as well as to Department of Community Services is that we can't just do, um, SPOs, which is store property orderments. We can't just clear the area without the outreach, but we can't do the outreach without a plan to restore the area, if that makes sense. So like that has to be a part of it. So when we were working, um, from depots to Lualualei in Nanakuli, when we worked with the homeless that we were housing, we specifically said, we're going to restore this area back to the public. This is a public space. They were like, oh, okay, well, when are we restoring it? So the communication was very, very clear. We worked to house like 16 people within the first two blocks, 32 people with the next. But we had to work with parks and then work with the officers to be very clear on this. So that for us in certain areas, it's working. I would say the second thing that they did in that street behind, um, I don't know what it's called, but it's by, um, Mayor Wright's in Kalihie. They actually just put the sit lie ban on the street. And so there are certain streets in the city and county of Honolulu that fall under the sit lie ban. And they put a additional street underneath of that. And then they basically u- utilize the law to clear it up. So I think, you know, every area is different. Obviously in Kalihie, it's a, it's not the same as White and I, it's not the same as the outreach I do in Kapole. But I do think that there needs to be a more clear plan than just clearing areas. So when we do the outreach, we're helping to house people and we're working with them on timelines and accountability. But we're also saying, hey, we're restoring this area and it's going to be used for X or Y or whatever it is that we're going to do in that area. So I'm not sure if that helps, but I do think I've seen those two solutions work.
No, and that's why I'm bringing it to your attention because you seem to be pretty successful about what you're doing. And I'm just wondering, like, I just don't want it to creep into Kapole and affect the community the way it's doing downtown or like in Chinatown area maybe like, because it's, it's really getting bad. It doesn't seem like it's getting better, you know, so.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. That's kind of why I brought it up to the board is like us having a solid, um, outreach organization is super important. So like if Achieve Zero is our service provider for Kapole and they no longer operate, that basically means that what, you know, Mr. Watson's saying will start to develop and it'll start to bloom and grow more without us even knowing overnight, it'll just happen, right? We have behind Walmart, we have by the bank, we have all, all kinds of areas. So I think it's important for us to get a group that actually has roots in Kapole and can do the services there. Uh, I love Achieve Zero, but their headquarters is in Wahiwa, they have too huge of an area. I'm working with two outreach workers, that's too few for us to have. So I have num- like many times told the city and the state, like this will not get better if we continue to have this many outreach workers, which is in White and I is two, in Kapole it's one. And, and that's all I have to work out with outreach. So I have asked the governor, I don't know if his rep is on here, but I have asked them if it's possible for us not to use any more Kohale money in our area and get more outreach workers. Because we have Kohale in the back of Kalailoa, we have four in White and I Valley. So if we need outreach workers, I would love for us to focus on that and start to run programs that are community based instead of all of the different Kohales of which it doesn't really matter if you have all these places, if you have no one that's actually doing the outreach, the intake, the placement and all of those other things. So thank you Chair, thank you Mr. Watson.
Okay, mahalo, thank you very much.
Mahalo Patrick Watson, a community member for reason concern and thank you council member for your heart, um, and engagement with our community members that are less fortunate and trying to make sure that they get appropriate services and that our public spaces are reclaimed for public good and not just the temporary halting of our less fortunate sisters and brothers. Okay, with that, um, let's.
I think Board Member Miki Allah might have had a question.
Oh, I see a hat, very good. Miki Allah, Linestone, Chair recognizes you, thanks.
Sorry, just one last thing to just echo how critical this is. Achieve Zero is really the only outreach service that we have in our area for our homeless population and they did an outstanding job with what little they had. So, um, that's a huge loss to our community, coupled with Louis's loss, which is the director of parks, that's huge because Louis left a while ago. So that they haven't, uh, filled his position is pretty huge, it means nobody wants it. And that nobody wants it is because they're going to inherit a lot of problems. Um, and so, you know, that's huge because, you know, that population is in our parks. Um, so I think this is critical, critical, um, coupled together. Um, if this doesn't get resolved, I think, I think it could be really bad, especially with the holidays coming up.
Yeah, I think, I think Board Member Listone is putting together two important points because, you know, DPR actually asked me and Augie to kind of cool it because me and, uh, Councilmember Tua just been like hammering on all our park stuff. And they asked us to kind of take a step back until they could fill Louis's role. But I work with DPR and the homeless outreach like together at the same time. So it is pretty cr- critical, those two pieces. And I would say that some of the, um, Achieves Zero people who are now not getting paid still want to help on their own free time because they still care about a lot of people they've been helping. And it's kind of serious, guys, that we don't have an, uh, provider that's ready and willing to help in our area.
Mahalo Councilmember, um, if you do have a recommendation for how we can support for a specific service provider, either one that's on island or maybe one that needs to rethink whether or not they should directly focus in this area. Uh, please do let us know so that we can, um, take appropriate action and support.
That would be great, thank you Chair.
Awesome, thank you Board Member Miki Allah, thank you Councilmember again. Appreciate your continued good work on behalf of our community. And now let's go to Uncle Frank Ginadio for the Ompo Report.
Uh, yes, uh, Frank Ginadio, Mr. Chair. I have no written report to submit, uh, because, uh, the Ompo Citizen Advisory Committee, uh, did not meet this month. However, I would like to just spend a minute on the Makakila Drive Extension. Uh, everything that, uh, Chair Ferrara and the other board members said is true, uh, about the safety issue. However, there's also a time and money issue that seems to be, uh, neglected. Uh, we had the article with a little bit in the Star Advertiser. Uh, the Civil Beat article was primarily about safety. However, every commuter north into Honolulu, north of the fire station is adding two to 10 miles daily on his commute. That's time, that's money. And at the bottom of the hill, there's a congestion management issue. Uh, that reflects directly into the, uh, advent of federal funds for the construction. In other words, both safety and congestion management are issues that qualify the extension, uh, for federal funding. And the, uh, I, I couldn't agree more with Chair Ferrara, that's not going to cost $200 million. Now, whatever it does cost, the feds are going to kick in if we can ever get the project on the Transportation Improvement Program. Uh, Mick mentioned the ex- the extension that's going to go out to Koalina. That's not the only road, there are so many roads in Kapole that were not on the transportation for Oahu Plan in 2001 and the Makakila Drive Extension was. And we're almost at 2025 and we haven't even seen a start on that. And I don't know how much more pressure we can put on them, but I can tell you this, uh, uh, Director Morton is not interested, he even told us it's a catch 22 issue. Uh, with throwing around an environmental assessment and this and that and holding off on the design. I believe they're purposely keeping the Makakila Drive Extension from getting on the tip because they don't want to spend city money on it. Thank you.
Mahalo for your oral report, appreciate you did good work. Are there any questions for Uncle Frank Ginadio? If hearing none, um, you're finished with our city reports. And for the recommendation of Board Member Miki Allah Linestone in order to make sure that we have community engagement and impact, um, forthright and for, and upfront, we did a little rearrangement of our agenda. And this evening, we now come to our presentations, starting with the Board of Water Supply. So we'd like to invite up the Board of Water Supply, um, presenters in person and online, um, to go over the proposed water rate increases.
Aloha Chair, aloha board members, community members. My name is Kevin Nehu. I am representing Board of Water Supply. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present tonight on our proposed rate increases. Um, there's a lot of information in our presentation and there's handout, we have the handouts available and so everybody will have it. So I'm going to try and go through it really quickly. And then so we can get to questions, um, we did have a community meeting in this location a couple of months ago. So some of you might have seen this already, so I'll just try to make this quick and then we can get to some questions on the slide. Okay, so this is just a general overview of, um, what, what we maintain. Yes, and like I said, you guys have the presentations, you guys can take a look. We pump about 145 million gallons per day. Um, and we have 21 thou- and 21,000 fire hydrants, 2100 miles of pipe. And you can see all, it's, it's expensive, what we have, what we have to maintain and operate next up. Um, we are semi-autonomous, I think most of you know this, um, so semi-autonomy just, uh, to simplify, it means that all the revenue we make stays with the Board of Water Supply. You know, the, the city has a general fund, but we don't, we don't use any of the general funds and we don't contribute to the general fund. So everything, all the rates that are paid stays with the Board of Water Supply and our efforts. Um, real quick, again, you guys have the slides there. It's just a breakdown of where your, your operating fund are, the revenue is going to go to. So you can see 12% is electricity, 31% operations and maintenance, uh, 90% for the salaries, 14% the debt service, so debt services, the loans that we took previously um, to do certain capital projects and get certain work done. Um, and then you can see the other, um, pieces of the pie. Uh, this just shows what we did over the last five years. Um, you can see it's pretty big numbers up there, so not going to get into it too much next slide. Uh, COVID-19 caused changes in customer water use patterns and then that caused us to change how we operate. And even peak times, peak days, um, peak times of these and so on and so forth changed next slide. Okay, so this is the slide that, um, this is what I want most of you guys to remember tonight. Because to me, this is, this is the, the one of the main reasons. Um, you can see it just shows how inflation has increased since in the last, the last four or five years and what our revenue increases were. So you can see we haven't been keeping up with inflation as far as how much more money we've been getting. So we've been able to do less with what we, what we have because inflation, it costs more. Yeah, so this is what, this is, to me, this is the main, one of the main reasons why. Yeah, we need to, uh, increase our rates, okay, next slide. And this also is a, a, a good slide because it shows the electricity costs. Everybody knows, right, we're one of the utilities, electricity is the other main utility. And then, um, everybody has to pay electricity, has to pay water. Uh, you can see the purple is our total, our total kilowatt hours, so our total energy use. You can see how we've made many, we put big effort into becoming more efficient. And not, not only, um, not only renewable energy, but also how we operate and become more efficient with our operations. And you can see that we've have, we have a downtrend in how much electricity, even though, you know, the population only is getting bigger. Um, but we, we have a downtrend in our energy, uh, energy use. But you can see that our costs is still going up even with our usage going down. Yeah. Okay, next slide. Um, Red Hill, yeah, that's big elephant in the room. Red Hill, we are going to do, uh, some, some projects as a response to Red Hill. Uh, you can see what we do, monitor wells, explore turbos for new sources. We, we're replacing 17 and a half million gallons per day that we have shut off right now. Uh, mainly because, um, undetermined what the fuel impacts are. And then, and next slide. And so as you can see from the energy side, it wasn't only the energy efficiency that we, we tighten up, but we have been tightening our belts over the last five years. Um, you know, we, we've had relatively flat budget, even though costs inflation has been going up. We have been holding a relatively flat budget over the last five years, next slide. Um, we all, we, we have to try and balance, yeah, our, our rates compared to our ability to deliver safe, dependable, safe and dependable water service. Yeah. Next slide. And then this shows what the rate increases, how it will be spent over the next five years and what types of projects. So you can see the, the brown, the top is, um, pipelines. So that's all our old, every time you hear about changing our aging infrastructure, that's what we're talking about. How we placing our pipelines. Yeah, we have, we're averaging a water main and break, uh, water main break a day. So that's what this will help reduce if we can replace more mains, yeah. And then we also have, uh, so you can see, it's just a breakdown as the years go by, um, of how we're going to spend the, the money. Okay. And then, okay, this is, we have the different types of customer classes. As you can see, the single family have, well, what I forgot to mention in the beginning is we have about like 170,000 services. Yeah, out there. So out of that 170,000, 90% of that service accounts are single family residential. Uh, multi-unit is about 4%, so you can see the, I mean, most, if not most of our um, services is single family residential. But the single family residential account for 35.4% of, of the water use. You can see the multi-unit accounts for 20.7% and non-residential actually accounts for 33.9% of the water use of the Hawaii. Um, and here's what we, what I came to present and, um, what, um, and take questions, which, um, the Chair gave us fair warning earlier, all questions. Um, so we're proposing, uh, 10% in February 2024. Yep, and 10%, nine, eight and a half, eight and eight. Uh, those look like big numbers, we'll, I'll get more into it in the next slides. Um, all the, all customer classes have the same rate increase, but we have a tiered system and we'll get into it with the next slides. Um, for our residential, so this is an example of our tiered system. So for single family residential, zero to 2,000 gallons is a, is one rate, which is for currently 446. Per, this is per thousand gallons, yeah, per thousand gallons. I, I, we, we calculated how many Costco waters that is, but I forgot what it was. But, um, it's $4,046 cents per 2,000 gallons. Uh, um, per thousand, per thousand gallons for the first 2,000 gallons and so on and so forth. So the more you use, then the, the more it's going to cost for the higher usage. Yeah, so that's our tiered system. And so what we wanted to do was we wanted to keep what we call the essential needs tier. The essential needs tier is the first 2,000 gallons. So a lot of our Kupuna, uh, customers fall into that category where they don't use that much water and they, they might be in like, they, they might use around 2,000 gallons per month. So we wanted to limit the increase to that first 2,000 gallons a month, which some of them might fall into. Yeah, so everybody has this essential needs tier though, yeah. Everybody has the essential needs tier. So we're going to keep the essential needs tier limited to 2.25% per year. Okay. Um, the rates was designed to, so our tiered rates and with our, with our rate increase, we're not looking to change the, the structure, yeah. We, we want, want to keep the tiered system because this is one of the reasons. The tiered system, uh, is designed to encourage water conservation. Like if you knew you went over 10, like. like if you was limited to 10 gallons of gas when you fill your tank, you would just fill 10. And then if you paid double for the next 10, you would just go 10 gallons at a time, however miles that is. And you would show that. You would, you would encourage you to use less. Yeah. So that's what the tiered system, our tiered system does is the more you use than that, that allotment, when how many you go over, it's gonna cost you more. And yeah, these are, these are the numbers like, I don't wanna get into it too much because you guys can take a look at it better. There's, there's a lot of numbers. But this is what it looks like for a single family residential for the zero, for each tier. Yeah. So currently is 446 per thousand gallons. $4,046 per thousand gallons in the essential tier. The next tier is $5.25. The next tier, which, which is 2,000 to 6,000, then 6,000 to 30,000 and so on and so forth. And you can see all the numbers. So what I focus on is the next two because you're not, you're not really gonna think about how much I pay in 2028. You're gonna think about how much am I gonna pay in come February, then how much am I gonna pay come next, next year July? Right? In a year. So with, in February, it's the essential tiers rate is gonna go up by 11 cents per thousand gallons. Yeah. And then on July, it's gonna go up another 11 cents. So 22 cents from our current in July of next year. And then so on and so forth. You can see the price difference and you can see how the, the tier four has the biggest, has the biggest increase. This is how you calculate your water bills. Like I said, the tiered rates, zero to 2,000. You just multiply it by that respective rate and then you add it all together and you get your monthly charge. What I forgot to, what I forgot to emphasize too in the beginning was that we're only water. Yeah. We do have the sewer, we do have the sewer charges on the bill that we send out. And that's done as like a courtesy of efficiencies so that, that, that we don't have to have two separate efforts to send out the bills. So because their, their bills is, is based on the sewer bills and we have nothing to do with their rates or anything like that. And, and their work. But so their rates are based off of water usage also. So that's why it's just more convenient. And so that's why we do it. But we, this, what, what I'm presenting tonight is only for water. So when you look at your bill, it's only gonna be the water side. Yeah. So then you can see your total bill amount is 53.71. The next slide. And then this is for our monthly charge based on your water meter size. So we do have just the base charge. Yeah. And then this is what our base charge is monthly. Based, and it's based on what, what size meter you have. Most single family homes or multi, multi-family residences will have five eights or two quarters meters. That's why it's, it's boxed in red. So that's what we're looking at mainly. And you can see 12 on nine. So you can see how that's just the base charge. No matter what you do, that's what you get charged per month. Okay. So this is the 10% of, yeah, which 10% of our single family residential falls in this category of 2,000, the way they use 2,000 gallons per month. So their current bill is 2101. And by February, they're gonna pay a dollar 43 more in February. And in July of next year, it's gonna be about $3 more per month for those that use 2,000 gallons. This is just examples. Yeah. Just examples. And then so now the average, this is the average usage is 9,000 gallons. Well, the average water user is 9,000 gallons per month. And this is what, when an average user bill would look like. The current bill looks like 59.56. Then in February, it's gonna go up by almost $6 and in July, the total increase will be about $12. So another $6. Yeah. And then there you go for the high water users. So using 35,000 gallons per month. You can see how it goes up from 228 goes up about 20, 28 dollars and then in February and then in July goes up another, another 28, $56. And then so this is just all the examples of multi-unit. So I'm gonna skip over the numbers and, and go to the next slide. You guys can take a look at, at the numbers forward. But where you fall, but this is just, just to give some perspective on the multi-unit residential water bills. Okay, next slide. And then so the non-residential customers actually, so you look at around 90% of our, our customers are single family residential, but they only, they only use a fraction of the water. So they, purposely, single family residential does not pay the 100% of the cost for us to deliver the water to them. And non-residential makes up for some of that. And that's why non-residential actually pays 117% of how much it costs for us to get them their water. So they pay more than what it costs us to get them their water. And right now they pay 527 per thousand gallons. So this is where the non, how the non-residential rates is gonna go up in the next, in the next five years. And it's straight, like I said, 10%, 10%, 9%, 8%. There's, it's easier, they're not tiered. And this is the different business types in this sample water bills for non-residential. Again, you guys can take a look at, at the numbers. Not applicable to, not applicable to most of our community members out, out here. So I'm gonna skip this. Golf courses. Are they on non-residential? Yeah, most of them use recycled water.
Sorry to ask the question.
No, no problem.
I already know, I'm manager for the Board of Water Supply. Thank you, Kevin. So most of the golf courses on the Ebonine use recycled wastewater. Out of the whole of the wastewater she was meant that we provide them what we, what they call our own water irrigation. Other golf courses, and there are only a few, use actually potable water, high quality, high quality drinking water. And I believe they're charged to non-resident children.
Yeah.
It goes without resistance.
Yeah, there, there's only a few and some golf courses have their own wells. So they don't take our, our. Next slide. Thanks, Eric. Okay. So lower rates for local agriculture and recycled water, those are continue. They'll still see the rate increases, but they're continued to have lower rates. Fee waivers, affordable housing, we're gonna continue retrofit for fire sprinklers and for homeless housing. Yeah. All important, all important issues in our community. Yeah. And we're considering waivers for new farmers. Yeah. So when we say waivers, we're saying waivers, not free water. We're saying waivers for certain charges. Yeah. So wave installation fees and water system charges. Yeah. Okay, next. So this is just not, not directly related to rates, but we do offer water conservation device rebates and we have, we have very, we've been very active with our conservation programs and messaging. We have, our communications office has been, been very, very well with our conservation messaging. Okay, next. And this is the process. I know hard to see for me, but basically we're, we're outreaching. We did all the evaluations. We update and we draft the rates and we already presented to the board. There is a community, there is a community meeting or actually a hearing. Yeah. A public hearing next month on the rates where potentially next month, the board could vote to adopt the proposed rate increases. Yeah. But there is a public hearing before that meeting. That anybody can attend. And there's information on who to contact at the end of this and and you can contact for any questions. And there it is. And I believe that's the end of my presentation. Are there any questions?
Mahalo, Nui Loa for the presentation. We'll take questions from fellow board members first, starting with board member, Meei Bosler.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I was just wondering with the Kaukaha'i, you were talking about are your, the Board of Water Supply is paying for some of the, the cost?
Well, that's, that's, that's for our own efforts on how to assess what, what the damage and what the risks are with what, with what the Navy spilled. Yes, with what the Navy did. So to answer, to answer your question.
So we're prepared for what the Navy did.
Well, so what, what, what the rates, like I said, the main thing is that inflation, yeah. So what's actually happening is we're deferring some of the work that we would have. So we're reprioritizing, reprioritizing the work. We actually deferring some of the work, which I mean, would have, would have consequences also, right? But that's the choices we're making. So the rates, the rate increases is not directly, you know, connected to that, to, to the Red Hill issue. With Red Hill and we are looking at what options there are to be group costs. Yes. But you know, anything with the, trying to get anything, nothing is guaranteed. And this is DOD, Department of Defense, we talked about. So there's nothing guaranteed. We cannot not plan. We cannot plan to have it and then not get it. So we have to plan. Yeah. And then if we recoup any of, of any costs, you know, from DOD, which is, which is your main question. If we recoup any costs from DOD, that, that would be reassessed at the time. Who, who knows when that would be at the time. And then like I said, one of the main things we did was defer some of the, some of the work, projects that we, that we prioritized higher. So we're pushing back some, some of that work. And if we recoup costs, then now maybe we can get back up. So it's not necessarily give back money, that kind of thing, right? Yeah.
And I have one more question. As far as with the voting, I'm assuming you're still kind of discussing waivers and such. But I'm wondering if it's possible to, or if, if in the essential needs category for the Kupuna, what about the nonprofits who are, I'm, I'm thinking about like a lot of the animal rescues or even homeless nonprofits that are helping and taking in linens and things washing that, that increases that might put them into high water user categories. And I'm really concerned about, you know, being these nonprofits being able to continue the work they're doing. Cause I mean, I work, I, I volunteer with quite a few different animal shelters and we all are asked to bring the linens home and wash. So if we're gonna have major increases, I, not for my family, but I'm thinking more of the, the nonprofits themselves. Can they get put into, you know, and one of those essential categories so that they can still do their work and operate? I mean, they're already on very limited budgets, but.
Again, Bernie, I'm manager for the Board of Water Supply. Thank you. So the nonprofits are probably not on a tiered rates. So they're on a flat rate. So the all the residential customers, single family homes, individual homes, multi-unit townhouses or high-rise condominiums, they're on a tiered rate structure. But nonprofits would be non-residential water rates. So their rate is basically flat. It's a certain dollar amount per thousand gallons regardless of how much they use. And some of the reasons we keep that as a flat rate, the non-residential category is really a mixed bag of different types of customers. Government agencies, parks, golf courses that use our water. And also businesses, including industrial customers, you know, like you talked about Island Energy Systems earlier, IES earlier. So your animal shelters are on a non-residential rate. So even if they're using a lot of water, it's gonna be a flat.
Okay. I was thinking more of the smaller ones. So not for Humane Society, maybe not Oahu SPCA, but the smaller like dogs, toy dogs and puppets.
They, you know, the non-residential category includes like a fast food restaurant or small business. So they would be on non-residential rates. But I'd love to check on that for you. You can give me particular names of nonprofits and their locations, your address. We'd be glad to check on their, what rate they're being built.
Just wanna make sure that these groups can still service our communities.
And I heard the discussion about homelessness, homelessness, folks in this community and I feel the challenges. It's great challenges.
Mahalo, board member and director for your response to the questions. Are there any other questions or concerns from fellow board members? Are there? Okay. The chair recognizes vice chair Dr. Kiyomi Nudde.
It's not really a question. I, I do want to say, Mr. Lau, that you are a real hero to a lot of us. And you know, we admire you. We thank you. You've stood up for the community. You've done a fantastic job. You're a great man. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nudde. And it's good to see you. I've been around a long time too. Thank you.
Chair recognizes board member, Mikel Linso.
I would like to say the same thing. You are my hero as well. It's such an honor to be in the same space as you right now at this moment. Thank you. For all that you do, for all that you do for Hawaii, for all that you stand for, for your vulnerability as well, for representing all that we feel as well. Just representing all of that for all of us, all these months. Thank you for that. I'd also like to share just a comment. These rates are high for us here on the west side. This is the driest side of the island. We are in the desert. This is gonna affect us more than anyone else on this island. When we think about families moving out of Hawaii, this is gonna be a reason why some are gonna move out. It's gonna take something like this. And I understand. I mean, this was a great presentation, super informative. I understand. I understand the reasons. You've laid it out. But for our families here in the west side, this is high. It's gonna affect our working families that are struggling already. It's gonna affect our parks that are dry already. It's gonna affect our local west side, small businesses that are barely making yet right now. It's gonna affect us all. If you have a water man or woman somewhere that can come out here to the west side to show us how to catch water, like seriously, to show us how to do what we can so that we can have water and that we can make it and survive out here with what little we have. We want that Ika and that knowledge. Cause our Kupuna survived and they made it and they, they could do it with all the struggles that they had. So if, if, if you have that kind of knowledge or those kind of workshops or those kind of people, please send them our way out here to the west side. We're gonna, we're gonna need it. Cause I, I, I think your board's gonna approve this or I think it's gonna go through. And if there are resources or ways that we can survive this, please, please send, send it our way. Thank you.
Mahalo for that. If I could also say, you know, first of all, to the first part of what you said, you I am just a public server employee along with Kevin and the other women and men at the Board of Water Supply. I, I am just a public servant, like along with Kevin and the other women and men at the Board of Water Supply. We're just public servants doing our job, our career. And, and yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. Uh, you know what? We have to, uh, do this delicate balance between providing safe and dependable water to our community. And also also try to keep it affordable for our customers. Uh, it's a real struggle, really. I tell you, we really struggle with that because we understand how much people are struggling with everything they have to deal with, other costs going up. Uh, so the way we also designed our rates, uh, the first 2,000 gallons for our residential customers, including our Kupuna and all our residential customers is below cost. And so it's discounted below cost that it takes to provide that first 2,000 gallons. Uh, and the rates, uh, move up to three, those first three tiers. So the other part is when you get to the fourth tier, that portion of your use that goes above 30,000 gallons, that's why we really start to charge a lot for a thousand gallons. It's really to try to encourage customers to move from the right, the fourth tier, usage in the fourth tier, move toward the first tier to conservation. And our rates, like, it took a different approach on this. I, I said, the customer charge, which is based on meter size, let's try to keep that as low as we can. And basically based, most of our revenue from people, uh, paying the quantity charge for much water they're using, the charge calculated for that. To give them more control over their bill through water consumption, using less, reducing their bill. It's different from the other charges that are, that come from the border, uh, from the other city department that's on our bill. Our customer charges kept smaller to empower our customers through conservation because our, my resources on our island are limited and finite. So we need to malama the mind, treat it as a gift. So thank you. And we would be glad to do more outreach to Kupuna. And one of the programs we have is gonna be targeting to go to, to the Kupuna, to their home with their permission, to actually do like water audits in their home. Do a simple change on, like faucet aerators, showerheads. By help them also apply for rebates so that they can try to manage their bill. Uh, reduce their, their leaks.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes a fellow board member, Amy Bosler.
Sorry, one more follow-up, just from, I was just inspired by, um, Mikiela. Um, I, I've been to your, your workshops and they're wonderful. Thank you for hosting them. I, I drive from the west side in with my kids and everyone's so gracious and allowing a two-year-old and a five-year-old be there in the space as well. And I was, it just maybe a suggestion as we move forward with these increases. If you could have, have ways to bring these rain barrels to the west side and maybe have, um, uh, alter the presentation slightly to be a more appropriate for our desert or side of the island. Yeah, cause the ones we've gone to are great and they're great for areas where we get lots of rainfall, but it would nice, it would be kind of nice. Or even if you had more zero escaping kind of workshops for our communities so that we could consider, you know, changing the plants that we're using so it takes less water or how to implement rain barrels or, and maybe even I, cause I know that you pay right now, when you go to the workshops, you, you commit to paying for them. Maybe how could we make our own on the side so we didn't have that $50 charge?
Maybe it's like train the trainer.
Yes.
So that, uh, yeah, I, I, uh, remember Bosler and remember with some, I, I hear what you guys are saying and, and I know we do a lot of stuff in town and in Halavon, or Halavon's area skating park, but the west side is a growing community. But we should actually do more out here soon.
Thank you. It's beautiful. The Halavon facility is beautiful. I love going there, but it would be really nice to have something for.
We can also do, I think we do some resources online.
Yeah.
Uh, workshop, like the rain barrel workshop online. Uh, but yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Mahalo, um, any other questions or comments from fellow board members? If not, oh, oh, I do see vice chair Dr. Kyoni Duttman correct it.
Just, uh, we're awfully close to reaching the limit of the water supply. Is that right?
Uh, in this area. So that's why we, you know, we are, uh, Dr. Dudley looking at seeing to develop first seawater desalination. In the, this, in Kamalisham Park.
Let's go to, um, community and questions and concerns. Let's start with, um, those in person. Uh, hopefully, Hala. If I can have Logan do the calling, please.
Tom Schmidt, I moved into the neighborhood in 61. It was all cane field. And this all is cane field, using a lot more water than we're using now. What happened to all the water? Then I go down to, uh, so conservation service and I says, hey, you guys have some money to subsidize, um, for some reservoirs because every time it rains heavy, I got a quarter mile of white water in front of my house going like 20 feet deep and 40 feet wide. And it goes somewhere down into the waterlands before it gets to the highway. But I mean, we got so much water up in my neighborhood. I mean, when it rains, we have a problem getting rid of it. I love being in a dry area, otherwise I'd have moss on my back and I'd be really kind of yoing. But I, I love the weather here, but we got plenty of water. We're not catching it and using it.
Thank you.
We're gonna start.
Yes, uh.
Right, so, yeah, so we, we pump 100% groundwater. Surface water, this is regulatory requirements, but surface water is a whole different animal as far as, um, using it for potterboards, bathing or congestion, something like that. So surface water is different. Uh, there, but there is an effort called One Water. Where the different, where the storm waters, that's storm water, they, they manage runoff, they manage how much runs off or they try to manage how much runs off. Then we got a regular regulations for that. We're, we're working together with the storm water side and the drinking water side partner to, I, I can't say we're gonna get to a catchment system. So what you're talking about, there is some like tap, tapless on Big Island. They do, they, they, they coordinate their own water, everything that, that's not what, what we, we do. We're not, we're not gonna, cause that's gonna be considered surface water. And then there's a whole bunch of different regulatory.
Well, I just, so I care about the groundwater. All I do care about is the surface water catching it and using it for irrigation. Cause it all ends up in the water.
Yes, like, like how you, like I was talking about the rain barrels, if you can get more efforts. Cause for rain barrels, as far as the Board of Water Supply catching the water, uh, yeah, like I said, that might, that, that, that's, you're talking big scale now. You're talking about catching the runoff that's in the, that's, like you said, the the water that's running, rushing down to the ocean, but yeah.
It don't get to the ocean. Doesn't even get to the highway.
Yeah.
It's all this water, all this white water. Just some, just percolates into the soil and goes down into the water. But from my observation, when I'm looking at my eyeballs, God, it looks like enough water to, you know, to service our whole community for sure. Where's it going?
Uh, you know, so there are like, uh, two aquifers and the shallow aquifer, which is mostly up plain, that's been a lot of coral, marine sediments and that water is probably percolating down into forest coral. And there are still users that pump water from shallow wells for irrigation for that. Uh, but the, the saltiness is pretty high sometimes, especially for pump. What's different from the plantation days? The plantations used to bring water from outside this area to irrigate the cane fields. So that water actually, actually, the, the sugar cane, it percolated down to recharge that shallow caprock, which was in those days fresher. Uh, so, but today there's no recharge occurring. There's still rainfall that runs off. And capturing rainfall is, is a good thing and kind of keep it on your property for use through rain barrels, uh, through, uh, swales or other ways that you can reduce runoff from the property. And that is under the, the proposed stormwater utility, which I won't go there under Department of Facilities meetings. We are looking at stormwater capture, even though we're Board of Water Supply, uh, in New Wano. You know, those big labs and where New Wano Reservoir Number Four, there used to be catfish fishing there many years ago. Uh, with, uh, working with DLNR, product resources. Uh, we are doing a study to see if we can capture stormwater there. The big storms that come in, short duration, high intensity, and treat that water and recharge the underground aquifer that we pump from. So, uh, capturing the water, storing it, helping to recharge the aquifer.
But why do you have to treat it? This, this water all comes from way back in the mountains in Rainshard. And it comes down the valley. There's nothing there to pollute that water. It's all natural. This comes down.
And it does have a lot of sediments in it, uh, that we need to, uh, make sure that we treat it to the level that it won't degrade the quality of the aquifer that we pump from.
What kind of sediments?
In the, the mountains are eroding, dirt, the soil comes out of the mountains and you know, they're.
They call that vitamins and minerals?
Uh, in the plantation days, you would get the whole spackle bag in the faucet. You just drink the water, yeah? I like mom's family grew up in the plantation, but, uh, today's a different thing. You know, there are also pathogens and those phiroses.
From the mountains?
From animals that.
Nothing back there except two cows.
Wow, sir, and then we also, so there are much more drinking water regulations that we have to make sure to comply with to ensure that the water is safe and it won't get people's.
Right, so we don't need regulatory requirements.
Yeah.
For any type of surface water.
Well, I grew up digging out of the water holes.
Yeah.
And, uh,
it, it, it's, it's EPA law. So you, you, you have to follow it.
They can have problems with people's voice thing, but the water I see around here, all is pretty natural.
Yeah, we're, we're very fortunate.
Mahalo, thank you so much for our community members' follow-up questions. But thank you, Director and Program Director for providing the responses. What I'm hearing is that it might be helpful to provide a slider to, uh, to in community presentations about where our water comes from, including the main aquifers and what projects that you're working on in order to actually help with the recharge. Because we also had a, a couple of chat questions that came in. Uh, one was about the DOD, which you addressed earlier, um, and getting resources back. Um, you explained that quite thoroughly regarding you have to plan. And if we get the DOD funds, then, then we will be able to, um, perhaps move forward on some of our priorities that you've laid out earlier. And the other question I got from a community member online is if there are any types of federal funds, um, that your office actually goes after, uh, for grant funding? And if there are, my question is, how can we help? Uh, because we understand you're public servants, but we also can help you. Um, if it's through public testimonies, letters of support, clarifications, that would be really, really helpful if you not just let our board know, but the other community boards know what we can do to help um, the Board of Water Supply get the funds from the various governmental entities, nonprofits and so forth in order to help us care for our fight. So what is, what, what part can we play to help you with that?
I appreciate, I'll, I'll just be really quick, uh, chair on our response, you know. Uh, uh, we, we take that to heart. We'd be glad to come back, uh, before the board with more information. And also information on conservation programs, opportunities for workshops. The, uh, how can the community help us? And, and going after federal funds, uh, chair and members and the public is a mode of operation that it's gonna only expand for the Board of Water Supply because we, we realize as we try to balance safe, dependable water service with affordability, that we cannot put 100% only on our water systems. Kupuna knows that are struggling, can't continue to do that. So we need to look at funds that come outside of the Board of Water Supply through federal programs. And that's, that's why we're gonna pursue hard. I do want to acknowledge the mayor and the city council for allowing some of the American Rescue Plan, the federal funds, the fiscal recovery funds. But we're gonna, we're getting $42 million in federal grant funds to, to pay for some of our CIP projects. That is, uh, that is a large amount of money. We're gonna pursue more federal funds. When we do apply for these grants, I'm told that we need like letters of support. Uh, so that's what will be coming back to the neighborhood boards, this neighborhood board and others for those letters of support. And then working with our congressional delegation, they're very important in this process to, uh, to communicate to these federal agencies the need for uh, this, uh, funding for these important projects.
Um, I was wondering, um, if there is any, my name's Aaron Cuny Iakla. If there's any, uh, testing kits, okay, the water comes into your house and you might think it might taste, it tastes different. I've been here 20 years. Uh, and before it tasted just a little bit of chloroxine. You know, and now it tastes a little bit of pipey, tastes like the pint. So I was wondering if there's any testing kits to test the water coming in to the homes.
Uh, we, uh, we conduct about, I think it's over 30,000 tests of the water in the water system before it comes into your homes, uh, to make sure that it complies with federal and state drinking water regulations. And we publish annually, the water quality report that we mail to all of our customers. Uh, where you can find out what we found in the water that, that serves your area of the community. Uh, and what else. So that's, uh, annual requirement that we have to do. If you have a complaint about water, please contact us, uh, because I send my chemist and microbiologist out to investigate, uh, what the problem is. The water up to the meter we're testing, uh, when it goes from the water meter, which is out, outside your property into your home, we don't know what the condition of the pipes within your home are. Uh, and if you're like me where I, my home goes back to the 1940s, we had to, uh, many, many years ago, especially my father-in-law did this because then before I started to live there, uh, it was galvanized pipe. And it was old and almost plugged and beeping and, and so you had to replace it with copper. So there's something to think about too, the plumbing within your home can affect the water quality that goes to your sinks, closets, so. Uh, test kits, uh, we, uh, I think there are test kits out there, but I, I can't, pretty much right now. Aaron, if you can give me information.
Okay. No, I, and I was wondering if the pure, you know, the, you know, the.
Uh, the water treatment.
Yeah, like. Brita, right. Those are like recommended, cause you know, my son said, don't drink the water, you know? And it's like, it, you know, it's expensive, I keep buying, uh, bottles of water.
So these home water treatment devices, what we call point-of-use treatment devices. Uh, it's really important that you read the company's literature very carefully because it'll tell you what it can remove to what. Uh, and it's important to understand what you're buying. Uh, I know that the carbon filters, because on the Board of Water Supply, we're required by the regulators to carbonate our water. Where we didn't used to do that many years ago. Partly any chlorine water, but now we have to maintain a chlorine residual water. So I know charco filters are efficient at removing the chlorine taste from the water. Uh, so, but read each customer. So, but read, each customer should be careful and read the, the literature, what that particular brand of device will actually accomplish.
I got a question too. You, you said that there was pipe breakage in your report?
Main breaks.
Main breaks. Are these from contractors building or the pipes are separating or blowing up?
It's age. It's contractors sometimes, there's mistakes happens. There's a number of factors that going to why the mains break. The, the condition of the pipe is probably the biggest factor. So how old, and that's why the main replacements and some of the, some of the work we have to do.
Are those the galvanized pipes?
We don't have.
Or are those what they would use like eighty years ago?
Some of our pipes are almost a hundred years old, cast iron. We do have small diameter galvanized pipe devices in the system. In different areas. Yeah, it's a corrosion affecting that old pipe.
Earthquakes.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Erin, if you don't mind, ready your contact information.
Mahalo, community member, for raising those questions. We do have a couple more community members online. So Vice Board Member Amy Bosler, raising her hand, yes?
I'm sorry, one last thing. I really love your handout. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Really love your handout. I, my friend was already doing the majority of the suggestion. Because water is really, I mean, it's life. It is our life. Yeah. And I was just wondering, with the restaurant water service rule, I love this too. I think it's a great idea. I'm just wondering, the fine, it's a little low. It's kind of like a slap on the wrist. So I'm just wondering, it's a good, it's a good faith. It's your request of the restaurants, but.
Yeah, yeah, we, we haven't been finding people. We try to urge them and work with the Restaurant Association to remind them. But if you see restaurants that are serving water, let us know. We'd be glad to reach out to them. A friendly reminder, please serve water request.
Thank you.
Okay, now let's go to community members online, starting with Melody Aduhua. For question or concern.
Thank, thank you very much, Chair, for recognizing me. I put my hand down. Okay, regarding meeting, the next meeting where we're going to, or the Board of Water Supply will be voting on the increase in rates, could you give us a date and time and whether testimony is still being accepted?
We have a date for the public hearing. We're, we're publishing the public hearing notice Friday. It'll come out on the Friday newspaper and also Sunday's newspaper. I was trying to remember, getting old, so today is only Wednesday. I thought it was Thursday. I was going to say tomorrow. Melody is going to come out on Friday. The public hearing will be held at two o'clock on, I believe, the date of the board meeting, November twenty-seventh. But please look at the public hearing notice. We'll put it on our website, BoardOfWaterSupply.com. But also look at the public hearing, please. I, my memory failed.
Okay, and testimony is still being accepted?
Testimony is still being accepted, yes. We've been taking, doing outreach since July. And we have a few more neighborhood boards to go, who have presented to around twenty-one neighborhood boards. But we welcome everybody to share their mona. This is still a proposal. If the board after the public hearing, at the regular meeting feels comfortable adopting the rates they can, they can also recommend, request us to do modifications. So the board has not made a final decision. The authority to adopt rates is with the seven-member board, not the city council or the board of the mayor.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, because looking at the charts that Kevin just showed us. And from looking at the headlines, it looks like fifty percent increase in five years. But having, looking at those charts, that seems to only be applicable to the low-end users, the ten percent that only use two thousand gallons per month. But then those that are in the average, it's, it's quite large. I would say well over fifty percent increase. I would say more like eighty percent increase, where it'd be going from currently paying fifty-nine dollars a month to ninety-seven dollars a month in five years. So that is well over fifty percent. And then if you are a high-end user, which is a three percent according to the chart, then again, it's, it's going from two hundred twenty-eight dollars currently to four hundred and thirteen dollars in five years, well over fifty percent. So that's a consideration, and I think the public is not clear that although your tier system is changes, I guess, for the high-end users, the average users, it's only the ten percent that's only going to get an increase of ten percent, or fifty percent, excuse me. But I think we're all more like, likely facing about eighty percent increase in five years. Okay, that's, and then I wanted to also, I'm a member of the C R I, which is the Community Representation Initiative under the EPA's twenty twenty-three Administrative Order of Consent. There are ten of us. And so I represent organizations. And so we are pursuing getting the D O D to pay for its damages that is caused by Red Hill. And so again, I'm looking at the chart because I have been asking the representatives of the Board of Water Supply and the various and neighborhood board meetings. What is the percentage of the, what you're asking for, your projection of one point two six billion in, in, in capital projects? And so you're, you're noting here, three hundred and ninety-nine million dollars is allocated for monitoring, monitoring and exploratory wells as well as Kaliloa Seawater Desal, as well as replacement sources. So that's about thirty percent. It, to me, it looks like thirty percent of what your capital improvements are going to go towards monitoring and exploratory wells. Do you know about how much then would be attributable to Red Hill? Because I would like to take that information back to Bob Thompson is our community liaison for this Assistant Secretary of the Navy. And he is well aware that we want to get that money because this rate increase is a substantial hardship to many families in which we are already paying the high cost of living in Hawaii alone. So would you be able to provide a more concrete number, I suppose, that we could do our initial ask to the Department of the Navy or Secretary of the Navy?
Yeah, I want to be careful with the numbers. And Kevin is correct. Of this five-year or six-year period, the Red Hill, there are Red Hill costs. We're doing things like drilling new, three wells or so shut them. Alava Shau, Alava Wells, I A M. So we're not waiting till years from now, whether, to know whether or not with the investigations the Navy needs to do, where that we can safely turn them on without pumping contaminated water into the hollowed-in water system or the I A M system. In the meantime, we're pursuing already on the conservative basis that we have to look for new sources, just in case. We don't want to waste the valuable years that we have. So we're going to incur costs. We haven't received a penny yet from the military to pay for these costs. So in this six-year period, there is a fraction of the cost is maybe attributable to projects related to whether monitor wells or resource. It isn't a substantial amount. And I want to be careful because, Melody, I told you this before too, the Board of Water Supply is keeping all options, including legal options, open to pursue pursue damages from the military for what they did. And I want to be careful because I give you a number and I don't want that number to be given to the Navy and give them the impression, it's only this number that's this much. But we don't, we at this time don't know what the final number might be. And I don't want to limit our options. So I just say that right now it's around ten percent, maybe roughly ten percent. It'll be one point two billion that might be attributed to Red Hill. But it's only the tip of the iceberg. I told my staff today. Because we're at the early stages of looking for new wells. And that's first step is to drill the hole in the ground, pump from the underground aquifer to test the quantity and quality of that water to see it's suitable for use by people. Then at that point, then you have to move into design of a permanent well facility, including all the pumps, mechanical, electrical systems, and the pipes to connect and bring that water into the water system when it's needed. That's the bigger cost later. And we don't have those. So we are keeping all options open, Melody. If you're concerned.
Okay, okay. And if I could ask one more question. Are you testing for PFAS also in the water? And also what kind of methodology are you using for testing? And is it on island or are the samples sent to the continent?
We are testing for PFAS and actually we've started testing back in twenty twenty. But we are now in a regulatory requirement from the EPA under Uncontaminant, Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Rule Number Five. And we're testing, I think, on a quarterly basis. Some sources that are closer to like Red Hill, we're testing more frequently for PFAS. We're using the methods that are required by the UK for drinking water. Even though it's coming from the aquifer, we're testing it to drinking water standards and to the lowest possible level that laboratories can reliably report.
Okay, so I take it you're using EPA's E A Ls versus D O H's E A Ls?
No, what we're doing is we're testing and reporting what we find to the lowest level that the laboratory can reliably test, which could be lower than the E A Ls, the Environmental Action Rooms, or R S Ls, for the, for the E A Ls for the environmental health, R S Ls for the U K. So we're actually testing to lower levels. Because what we want to find is, how is it there at the lowest possible level? And what's happening? Is it trending higher or staying stable or diminishing? We want to know that.
Okay, because there, there's two different.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Vice Chair.
I think we've got to move on, sir.
I heard the call, the orders of the day from the Vice Chair. So I'll kindly ask that Community Member Melody Aduhua follow up with the Director offline, if that's appropriate. Because we have other things on our agenda and we still have community members following up. So unless your question's specifically about the presentation tonight, I would ask that you kindly follow up with the Department, the Board of Water Supply offline.
Very well, Chair. Thank you very much for your indulgence. Thank you. Thank you to the board as well. And to Board of Water Supply. Thank you, Ernie Lau. You're great. We love you.
Okay, Community Member Patrick Watson, do you have a question regarding the presentation?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Lau, again, a fan of yours. And I just wanted to bring up a couple of items here. First of all, the gentleman that was asking about the water quality and amount, I would humbly point you to Dr. Dudley. He has a wonderful website, wwwtwentyfiftyhawaii.com that goes into great detail about the water here in the Eba Coast. So, and he's sitting right there, so you could talk story with him. Secondly, regarding the information about the Red Hill impact to our water supply. So we lost water by the Navy flushing the system. We have Mokulea or like the Dillingham Airfield and Kanyohi water being wasted. We got seventeen million gallons a day, based on the report you guys just gave, lost to the wells being closed. We have, let's see, long-term effects, we don't know yet, right? So, and then there was an issue regarding like an emergency facility that was just recently completed prior to Red Hill being completed, I mean, Red Hill incident, I think. And it was supported by the Halava area. I think, Mr. Lau, you'd mentioned something about that, like a hurricane emergency infrastructure. Do you remember?
Yeah. Hi, Mr. Watson. Nice to see you again. That, that is actually an emergency backup generator in case of a hurricane. We just finished installing a brand-new generator for Halava Shau because that, we were, and Kevin has helped to put together the plan. That was going to help provide water, assuming that eco-power would not have a service because of the hurricane. And we need electricity to pump water from the underground aquifers. And unfortunately, we're not going to be able to use it.
Right. Mr. Watson. That's my point. So what I'm looking at is a whole bunch of costs. And I know you mentioned that you don't want to yet quote an actual price on all of this cost. But are you at least keeping track of all of these different costs and impacts on like a daily basis? And determining like, you know, kind of, kind of like the, the national debt, you know what I mean? It keeps going up and up and up. So when eventually do you pull that trigger and, you know, submit that information to D O D?
Yeah, we, we are tracking the costs because we know that we, we want to keep the option to pursue recovery of those costs from the D O D, that to, to the benefit of our ratepayers, our customers. There are, I just want to be careful. Be careful that I don't limit the legal options by trying to respond to your question, compromise. Compromise that process.
Yeah, I understand that. But yeah, I'm just curious, the same thing that the lady prior to me was asking. I'm, I am also concerned about that cost and how it gets resolved. But my last thing was regarding this, the whole point of your meeting is any input from the community about these tiers. Is there, we can allocate more to the tourist tier, the visitors bearing more of the cost? Is that something that we can kind of use as an option?
So it was in one of those slides where for the single-family residential customers, which are about over a hundred fifty thousand customer accounts, I don't know, the majority of a hundred seventy thousand. That, what, what we're going to recover through the water rates proposal is only about ninety-five percent of the cost it takes to provide that service to the homes. For multi-unit residential customers, we're at a hundred percent. So what they're paying through their bills, that revenue covers the cost of providing that water. Non-residential customers are, although they have a flat rate that is not tier, they're, they're being charged a hundred seventeen percent of what it costs to provide a new service. That additional seventeen percent beyond what it takes to provide a new service is helping to subsidize the residential customers. Our agriculture customers, our recycled water customers, non-potable water customers, because we want to incentivize people to use lower-quality water where appropriate, like for irrigation of golf courses, landscaping of cars, and save our precious high-quality wine for people. So a hundred seventeen percent is right now. We are eventually trying to move back to everybody paying the cost of the service. But we felt that, given the circumstances, we should leave the single-family customers, residential customers, they're ninety-five percent of cost of service. And still put a little bit more burden on the non-residential consumers, which includes government agencies too.
Okay, great. Mahalo. Thank you for all your work. We really appreciate what you do for our community, Mahalo.
And, and Mr. Watson, your, your dad used to be on the board?
Yeah, he was the chair for many years under Fosse and Harris. And yeah, so that's why I take a vested interest in water here because my dad was very much, you know, wanting to protect our resource. And I know that you are too, so your spirit is aligned with him, so mahalo.
Mahalo. Thank you.
Mahalo, community members. Thank you very much, Board of Water Supply representatives, for bringing this presentation to us. Mahalo, and for all of the follow-up questions, please do contact the representatives before us. The last thing I would like to note, this Chair, is that I recognize the hard work of the Board of Water Supply. And I also recognize how you diligently stewarded our corporate resources. Our public dollars and our public resources. Because when we watch what you did over the last few years, not just for the last four, but over the last twenty, it's been amazing. And that we only have to do an increase now for this amount. Although needed, it's amazing what you've accomplished with what little you've had, so. Mahalo, thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we go to our next presentation. And would like to invite up. For residential housing. This evening, we have with us. Kalailoa Affordable Housing Project and the Ika'ohana.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board. We appreciate the opportunity to share with you our Hawaii aloa project. This is on the Hunt Kalailoa Development. You have a presentation there on the screen and I'll put it for those of you in the room. This is an elevation of what the building will look like. It's a seven-story building. The first floor will have a combination of retail, leasing office and community space. We're very aware of and support the initiative there for streetscape. And involvement of the community as well as residents of the building. This is a similar building to what we've done over on Lahaina. Unfortunately, our building on Lahaina was affected by the wildfire. We've been over there today, so we're a little, I'm a little tired. Been front two hours today, so bear with me. The next slide will give you a sense, you all know this, that you're in the area. They are, I think, I think they don't have this, okay, so by way of background. Ika'ohana, we're a nonprofit, nonprofit developer of affordable housing. We believe in developing with strong families in mind. We do have senior product, family product. We've been doing this for over twenty years together. Blue is our development arm and it's a family-owned business based in California. We pride ourselves on the ability to work with various financial executions. In the development of our, of our loan and housing tax credits executions. All of our properties are developed with sixty percent AMI or lower. And we utilize state and local or state and federal tax credits to execute our, our developments. Next slide, this will give you a little background. As I mentioned earlier, we do have, we did a project here on Oahu. That was a deal we did in conjunction with the DHHL. Our Uluo Pukuiya project is one that's currently under development on Big Island, or I'm sorry, on Maui. That is on seeded land and we're doing that development as a result of our P, it's two hundred units. Those are eight plexes, which will, Doug will have some more background as we get into the presentation. By the way, I forgot, I'm Tom Fisher with the group. This is Doug Baker. Sorry about that, a little tired. And then our villages of Laipua is a, is a interesting deal over on Big Island. We've done several projects now on Big Island, but that is a fifteen-year tax credit deal. But they're, they're developed as single-family homes, which is also being done in conjunction with DHHL. You can see some of the volume that we've done, over twenty-five hundred units, about one and a half billion dollars of equity in debt. We do have a real high skill level and using bond financing for, for our projects. And next slide. So again, I'm sure you all are familiar with this. We are parcel four, which is kind of hard to see on the screen, but the next slide will kind of give you. Yeah, so you can see that this is a parcel four that we're in contract right now with Hunt Development. To develop our affordable housing project that does front on Roosevelt. And of course, the side street is Franklin Street, which is a private street. And this will go also to go through the site plan a bit. As I said, we're going to do this in two phases. Our first phase will be, the building will face. Roosevelt Street, Roosevelt Avenue rather. And that's going to be a seven-story building with about a hundred and thirty-four units. Again, retail facing the front and, and plans include community area. Leasing office and again, the streetscape. We are going to design to, there's a hundred and, a hundred and eighty-foot road right now that. For future expansion of Roosevelt Avenue, we're designing and developing and being mindful of that setback. And that we think that's obviously a very important thing down the road to have that, that road, road extended. Phase two is going to kind of be on the lower right-hand corner of the, of the site plan. That'll actually end up being a nine-story building with a hundred and twenty-six units. So when the project is fully developed, we have two hundred and sixty units that will all be sixty percent or less. Rented to, to residents at sixty percent or less of the area median income. See, I think. Yeah, so Doug, Doug will take over now, I think, talking about some of our design direction and social services.
Okay, a couple, a couple of things I'll just point out here. Actually, the, on the ground floor. I'm going to skip a little bit because I just want to get into some of the details and cover a few things. On the ground floor, that really a lot of that is going to be service. So what we normally do is on every site that we have, we have a lot of wraparound services. And those services are actually not only available to the, to the tenants, but they're also outreach into the community. So if we offer a program, and I, I'm kind of bringing that up because when you talk about even water. All of our buildings are. We generally promise leads silver, but we're actually lead gold on all the buildings that we do. So we have all the low-flow fixturing and all that kind of stuff, so we do provide that. I thought it was interesting you mentioned tonight, we haven't really, we worked on the conservation side, I guess, a lot with, you know, providing low flow. The catchment basins that you guys are talking about is, is a bit new in terms of, but that's also something. We could look at and help tackle. Inside the community and we provide also the education that you're talking about, whether it's how to. Work to, part of the lead training is that you also get lead training. So it teaches about conservation, so some of that stuff in the context of the family, we try to educate about those things. But I, you know, like I said, I've learned, it was a good meeting tonight for me. Because I did pick up a few things that we could probably integrate into our services, because we also do like the, you know, on the. You know, solar, you know, water heating and stuff like that, it was all built. Okay, the, when we go into a community, we kind of look at this community and we say, what, what has it been? What is it going to be? What might this, you know, look like? And evidently, and I'm not an absolute expert in this area, we have a whole design team. We do our own kind of internal design boards, because we'll usually give direction to the architects. So you, I guess you follow under the category of streamlined modern, which is a, goes back to the thirties and forties. It had, and it's not only the kind of a transition from art deco. And I believe what they're saying is that it, that it has a lot of, with the old ships, I guess. The way the old ships were formed and you have curves, you have a lot of, you know, you have curves and other things that are involved in that. And we're trying to integrate that. I'm just going to read one piece of that, that we, we look at this overall architectural style. And then we integrate it into the, you know, Hawaiian community, because we have these two different features here. So we, we, we want to use, you know, the elements of this streamlined modern as a, as a tribute to the naval station. But also bring back the naturally inspired, sustainable materials to bring the Hawaiian warmth and respect. Of the natural environment to the design style. So what, you know, we do a lot of the native Hawaiian landscaping, we do all of that. So that's part of the, kind of the part of the package, so that's, that's what this is reflected here. What we're doing also is we're looking into activating the streetscape. They have some conditions within this community where you kind of pass through the middle of sites. But the issue with this, trying to establish the connectivity with the surrounding communities. Because the way they have it kind of designed now, there's some guidelines that we're trying to kind of modify slightly. So that we can bring, that we can connect, you know, from neighborhood to neighborhood, because a lot of this is, you know, undeveloped land all the way down there. So we're kind of taking that, we're the first ones that are kind of looking at this. So we have kind of a street, streetscape concept board, so you don't just go. So we have this kind of this, you know, planting strip along the, and with some, you know, benches and things along the roadway. So it insulates that from, you know, the sidewalk and then we can create this, this active streetscape. And we're doing a lot of, in a lot of different areas. The goal being, and I'll add to that, is that we also have the, the roof on the, on the fourth level. If you kind of go back to the plant, it's also a green roof, so we're going to green up that roof as well, so that'll also be. Activity space, you know, for general activities. So, and then, and then of course. Look along here, here's a brief description to development that I think I'm already. Discussed about, so we've got, we, we can see kind of the features, one, I'm sorry, I'm skipping around on it. He's, he's working the slides because I'm really, I'm screwing you up, actually, I apologize, okay? But I'm working right now on the development, it's right here. And what this is, is it's, and Tom kind of went over this, so I won't spend a lot of time on that. I'm going to go to the service strategy. You see the service strategy page? Okay, so what we do is we, we have, with every site that we do, not only do we have the typical. Am I, one more. With every site that we do, we have a service, we have a service package. So not only do we have a manager on site, we have the maintenance on site, we also have a community program coordinator. And what the community program coordinator does is it reaches out to the community to try to identify. So we're going to take in a resident and we're going to also kind of assess the community, the surrounding community, what their needs are. But then we form relationships with the surrounding community, because there's a lot of enriched service providers right in the area. And a lot of these areas, we aren't, you know, necessarily an expert in a particular area of service. But what we can do is we can provide resources and space. And that's what we're really good at. So like on a deal that we have right now, Tom mentioned in Lahaina. We're across this, we had a building that fell down and on the other side of the street, we still have a building. I mean, we have a project on the other side of the street, it's a couple hundred units. And we actually have early childhood education on property that's available to everybody. And that's, that's also the certain, we do, so we build the space and the service provider comes in. At no lease cost, because we don't want to drain the service provider's resources, right? We just want them to provide that into the community and we're good at creating space. But again, each one of these things, like we think about early childhood education versus like we have an industrial kitchen there. There, it's that community is short in the industrial kitchen, they have a lot of people who have a need for it, a lot of people that will use it. But they, they don't have a space. So what we do is create space. We put all the stuff in it that they, to kind of their specifications, because we work with them and then we say, what do you need in there? And then they can come in and actually use that space to provide the, you know, so it's, it's, you know, providing food, food out to the community or whatever. So then we, we, you know, we have, we set these service goals. Then we coordinate again with the local community and then we go down and measure the assessments, you know, how well are we doing actually? Would we actually provide that service? So if it's in a lit, if the literacy class, we're going to say, okay, we provide, we have a literacy issue here. We're going to figure out how many people, you know, aren't reading and are we successful with that program and actually creating that opportunity to kind of read. And then we, we kind of give the service categories. So this is like healthcare, education, economic development, so we have a number of service categories we look at. And I'm just giving you an example, if you go back to this local, like this was just a snapshot of some things in the local community. And you, I'm sure you could add probably volumes to this list that we've provided. But this is, so we have like permanent people that are going to be on site, but we also have pop-up services. So you might do like a health education program or you might assess, we have like, we'll have like CVS or, it's here, it's longs. We, in different places, they might come in and provide for assessments, like do you have diabetes or things like that? So we'll have, that's kind of what we call a pop-up service. So anyway, I'll give you an example of that. So these are some of the people that we're looking at. If you go to the next page, this is the rents for this development. As, as they stand today, it changes every year, but this will give you kind of a snapshot. I'm, you're probably familiar with, you're familiar with these programs, I'm sure, right? This is probably not news to you. I'm sure you do some of them, so. The rent page, you can get a kind of a feel for that. There's also what we're exploring in this area is you have that kind of lost middle now. I don't know if people are talking about that lost middle at all. Where you, you know, it's not necessarily, and we're working with the state on that as well, because there's that one that goes up to the eighties and, you know, they're kind of in that. Still can't afford anything, but you know, they might be in the teaching area or something like that. And then this will just give you an idea of a snapshot of some recent projects we've done. In the area, I mean, around the islands. The one in the top here, that's the one we actually lost. But the rest of these are still up and running.
And the one for Kalailoa will, will be kind of based off of that. You know, that was a four-story building on a, on a parking podium, so it was very similar. We're going to go seven, be within the height restrictions, but it'll look very similar.
The one on the right is what Tom was referring to, too, that's a kind of a deferred ownership. Product that, has anybody done one of those? I don't know. You can use credits to actually defer ownership. So you can create an affordable, but those are an opportunity to buy at the end of the compliance period. The next slide is, will give you an idea of what the kinds of. Materials that we use in recent, in the recent projects. So we have like, most of these materials are highly sustainable. We look at, you know, allergens, we look at all that kind of stuff, so we're, we're, we do a lot of the hard surface flooring. Because obviously, a lot of the, one for sustainable, but two, because of the health and wellness programs that we do. We don't want to have like, if I put carpeting in there and somebody's an asthma person, they're going to need that. So we, we, we know that when we plan a site, that a couple of things, is they stay, you know, affordable for many, many, many years. So they're not even like, just a home that you start, because the tenant that comes into us typically can't. If they have a carpeting issue, they can't rip that carpet out, so we have to kind of anticipate some of the needs that we may encounter down the road. So that's that site and. That's it.
Mahalo, thank you very much for the presentation. Are there any questions or concerns from fellow board members? And if we can take down the slide, that'd be great. Chair recognizes, remember, Michaela and Stone.
I'm sorry for your loss, your building, Maui. Sorry about that. Thank you for being here. You're such a long day. I think I've seen you surveying your lot. I am right across the street. I run an after-school program. And Tony's over there, he's probably like, ah, he knows Kalailoa like, like the back of his hand. I'm excited about this project. And yeah, you have your contact information, you know, when you get it running, if you have children, I'd love to serve them. But you know, when Wa'ke'a was built, which is right next door. It had highs and lows, like this, especially with the AC and, you know, there's some infrastructure. But this type of housing is much needed in this area. And so I'm just going to send you lots of good energy for a successful project. I wish you nothing but the best. And I, I hope I run into you, but I, I've seen you folks, you know, they're like, sir. You know, because there's that abandoned building, right? That, yeah, right. And I look at all the time and think, oh, man, I wish somebody would build something right here, and so that wish is coming true. So I wish you all the best.
And we are looking forward to, we've done a lot as a latent line and it does seem like the niche, you know, is really there. But we need everybody's help. That's the, that's part of what we get from these community meetings and outings and stuff like that, so. I'm sure we'll have a lot to do.
We like to get involved in the community. We're now part of the community, so we, we take a lot of pride.
Excellent. Um, thank you. I'm sure recognizes by Sir Dr. Kiyonita.
I do a lot of work on hurricanes. And uh, people are not aware that the spawning ground for hurricanes over by Mexico with the warming of the seas has moved up higher. And we are now in the direct path of hurricanes coming. People aren't aware that hurricanes are getting stronger and bigger. Just had a category five hit the mainland again, uh, yesterday, today. And uh, I think we really need to be aware that category five is coming and it's coming here to this island. And that we've got to start building everything at category five resistance level. So I just want to make you aware of that. We've, uh, this board has been very supportive on the effort to try to get the word out. We're going to have a program, it's going to be on TV in January. Discussing the big problems that we have. But there's no question in the world that category five, it's going to hit the side of sometimes soon.
That's become a, we've heard a lot about that lately because you know, the, also your architectural, your codes have now come from like, I think it was two thousand six and now they've updated it to kind of like two thousand eighteen and that's, that's coming a lot more into play. And we are looking at that. And the other thing we're looking at completely, um, that came up with the stuff actually out of Lahaina, two things. Is that one is when we created the Lahaina site, we're now the same, we did the industrial kitchen. Well, what typically happens is we come to these meetings and then we get a comment like yours. And then what happens is everybody says, now wait a minute. Well, a lot of times you don't have ele- electricity over there, right? So now the community centers now become a shelter in place. Let's, so we've now developed these community centers that are becoming shelters in place where now we're adding that uh, solar uh, batteries. So it's not just about doing solar anymore. It's about doing solar batteries because now we can run that community center for three to five days. And we can, so if people have to, you know, so they have food that they need to store. They, because now we, they said, oh, you have an industrial kitchen. Well, why can't we just make that now uh, shelter in place thing? And then they, and then they came up with, now we're going to be hit with a, you know, we're going to get hit with a hurricane. And I was going, huh, we didn't think about that, you know, we hadn't. And so we did fortify, we are, we're not up to code over there right now in terms of, uh, anywhere near five. But we'll look at it because I know it's, we're, we, we, we're responsible for all our communities. You mentioned the eighty, the families, we have eighty-six families that were displaced there. And it's miserable because they're miserable. And so we've got to get them back somehow. That's why we're building faster than we can, we're, we're running through that behind it right now like crazy. Trying to get those eighty-six people back and we meet with them, you know, out there. But we will take that. I saw Tom writing it down. And we'll, then we'll look at it, you know, I, I, I don't even have to actually be honest with you, right? As we sit here today, I don't, I don't even know what a category five builders, I'm sure they know probably in Florida, they're probably building up to that standard. So we probably need to look at it pretty much.
I think you, each island has a different code, et cetera. But I know to your point, the twenty eighteen code, a lot of attention is paid to win. Where, where you sit on the island, where they, they, they will get and increase the, the strength of windows, fire and Doug Benson, we build the gold standard, anyone can be. But no, we, we totally get it. I think that just to follow up a little bit, and we're, we're building in Lahaina, really quite amazing. Uh, as you get out, there's mirrors of Maui going, going down, down the street, buildings behind. The north side, we're, we're building a new two-hundred unit duplex development. On the um, south side, the building that was up there a minute ago, people moved in less than a year ago. Finished it, they moved in in October. We had, we had started the two-hundred unit property just across Yavex. When the fire hits, our, our twenty-eight and a half acre, two-hundred unit under construction property was largely not affected. I mean, we had some debris, uh, dust and ash. So from an environmental agenda standpoint, we have to take care of some things. But we are, we're back building that project. And Doug's point is, there's basic standards for living dinner. At the time of the fire, they're all been displaced. We're in touch with all of them. We know that they all survived the fire. That was the main thing. Uh, but we're working with them now as, as we get the next two-hundred units built, we get them all.
And what Tom is getting down to is that building we put back up, because we're really trying hard to put that building back up. It's going to be different. In fact, what they have now, I was just, and this is off the subject, I'm going to say it because we're here. Is that like right now, they have, in California, we do fires. We don't do the, you know, we don't do the hurricanes, but we do fires. So they actually, when I went back to our shop, they do like the ceramic roofs that look like tile that are li- literally, they don't, you know, they don't burn. So we're going to do a lot of that. It's, the subgrade is going to be expensive, that's one thing. But what we're trying to convince the agencies of is the fact is it's a pay now, pay later type scenario, right? Because what they're talking about in Lahaina right now, the bill's going to be absolutely tremendous. So some of the uh, cost savings would be to try to say, let's invest today so that we don't incur the cost tomorrow. So anyway, it's, it's good. We'll take it down. Okay.
You mentioned earlier in the presentation about R1 Water. So on Maui, we have one site that is serviced by R1 water. So we're, we're there with that process. I mean, that's a properly done and, you know, it's a very, you have to manage your site, right? Because you can use it for irrigation. But a lot of our sites have a lot of green space for this to fund, right? For, for barbecue grill, outdoor activities. So we have to educate the tenants as well as the ownership to how you've really managed R1 water source. But for irrigation, certainly, we're there with it, definitely supportive.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other board members have questions or concerns? Chair recognizes.
Aloha, mahalo. I um, echo Mikiela's sense regarding the loss of your kuhulu that you are able to safeguard. Um, I will start with the positives. I like what the intention to build a space that is more sensitive than objects we've seen to both earth, aina, um, and just the amic and like needs that we have here in um, Kapole area. I'm always, and I'm not going to nut positives, but hopefully construct um, input, which is that I'm always a little bitter when I see development projects because you said that you learn certain things from Lahaina and I appreciate those um, ways for what they are. But at the same time, I think what I'm from Lahaina are things that I've, I, as a person of this area has, I've always known, which is that water is and land is finite. And I think when we're hearing in um, water reports and reports alongside things reports, it's kind of hard to, I think, um, synthesize that into into a, a coherent message, you know, um, appreciate the certification that you seek for every project. Um, but same time, is developing one more and exactly what we need? Or do we just be smarter with what already? So I think that you can act similar sentiments from the community. Appreciate your, your drive to be involved in the community. Um, as a small um, effort to, to reach out to as a community member, I think that it shouldn't be Ohana Ikaika. And I don't think that Ikaika is exactly what you, it means in this regard. Um, Mikiela Lindstrom would be a better um, just in that area as an aloha loa kumu. But I just want you to be aware that you'll probably hear a lot more comment that I have regarding um, the skepticism of, you know, their coming in and trying to develop area that stress, this is Lahaina, if not more so.
Mahalo board member for raising your questions, your concerns. Are there any, are there any other? Manao from the community at large. Any questions like the community members? Um, chair recognizes with the hand up, hand up. Right behind the, come up please, come up please.
Hi, so Tia Kuputu, uh, community member. Uh, so I was just trying to look up on you guys' website. Is there anything that's going to be posted regarding the uh, you presenting here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll, yeah, that, yeah, that. Yeah, this is our.
Just to kind of get, yeah.
Make kind of a maiden voyage here.
Yeah. So this is a proposal to have a development for the public? Just anyone that lives in Kapole?
Or, yeah, with, with an income, there'd be an income restriction, you know, for the, it's the work, it's a workforce project. So you meet.
A board house.
For the house. Correct, yeah. Okay, well, we'll get that to you then.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions from the community at large? Seeing none, uh, let me provide you with uh, some thoughts from the chair given our previous discussions with those that come seeking development in our area. One, consider how your project might be or might complement a community resiliency hub focusing on solar, water recycling, water recharge in the areas, design elements that allow for a level of sustainability for the community. Because we're building high-density units. And we do not have shelters for them to go. So please focus on design elements that way. Two, consider a design element that honors the area, tells the story of the land that you're on. Not just Hawaiian generically, but Hawaii that is Kapole, Hawaii that is Kalailoa. So the specific area sets the place. Three, use our indigenous and endemic plants for your landscaping. Use those things that already grow here and grow here well instead of importing others. Four, uh, mahalo nui for providing services to in your spaces and creating community spaces, but highly consider engaging with those organizations that have specific roots in this area. For example, KKV, Koko Kalihii Valley, macha aloha for them. I know their president and their board. But they're not the community health center that services this area. It's the Wainakaos Comprehensive Health Center. So if we're looking at sixty percent AMI in the demographics of treatment, we should target those relationships with those that are already established here. Um, so I mean, we can have an offline conversation for recommendations, um, if that is something you're open to. Um, and four, um, and lastly, consider on, onboarding or hiring the community and cultural liaison so that it can help you navigate uh, highly sensitive issues that might get in the way of the good work that you're trying to do, like your name. Ikaika Ohana. Um, at least for this area, you will get lots of curious thoughts, but we have, we have people that can help you navigate concerns, cultural questions and community concerns outside of just our board. But more than happy to call in on us to provide you as much information regarding these elements offline. Echoing, echoing, Mikiela Lindstrom, thank you so much for targeting the sixty percent AMI. Because that is our community. Mahalo nui la, thank you so much.
I think, no, thank you. Thank you all.
This time, the chair recognizes we have one presentation. And there's also nine forty. Also nine forty. And we have a hard stop in seventy minutes. So, so to all of our state representatives, congressional representatives, mahalo nui la for being on with us this evening and you will all not get too you have a break.
Have a break.
We do have one final presentation and then we will then go to board business. Um, on those elements that we need to get done this evening, including when we're meeting in December. So board members, please consider what dates you want to throw out. And with that, we invite um, Joel Simon Pietri, uh, and providing of feedback, a report to the community on the work that they're doing with Aloha Carbon.
Thank you very much. Um, uh, mahalo to Chair Paris and to the board. Thank you very much for giving us um, this time. I am going to show some slides, so I'm going to try and share from here. And um, hopefully you can see that. Um, so this is in a way an update and kind of new information. Um, since we first came uh, to you a couple of, almost two years ago, um, to talk about uh, our planned Aloha Carbon project, we let you know that uh, we were going to be doing community engagement and getting input to help uh, inform the environmental assessment for the project before we actually wrote it. And um, so this is going to be sort of our brief out to you of what we heard um, over the past almost two years. And um, I, you know, I was hoping that um, Naomi from our team could actually be the one giving this presentation. Um, but unfortunately she is very sick. And uh, so she had to stay home. That's also why I'm doing this from home. I didn't want to get anybody sick by going in person. So um, please bear with me. Um, I've just gotten my voice back. So okay, so um, just a little bit about us. Um, my company is Simo Pietri Enterprises. It's a small business based here on Oahu. Um, it's actually, I'm uh, um, uh, I basically started it in two thousand and six when I first moved back to Hawaii and to Oahu. Um, after leaving active duty in the military. And so, you know, my company's been focused on sustainable business. Um, up until three years ago, we're uh, focused on consulting and helping kind of clean technology startup companies to raise funds. Um, starting three years ago, uh, based on what we were hearing from the community and also from our uh, heavy industrial clients, that there was kind of a need that needed to be met um, to, as far as improving waste management here on Oahu. So, um, so um, and the focus has really been on construction and demolition debris because right now almost a hundred percent of that waste is landfillled um, on the west side in Nanakuli. And um, I just see it as part of my kuleana to do something better with waste than to uh, put it in the ground and call it disposal. So um, so this is kind of a picture, you know, that uh, we took a couple of years ago back when PBT land was sorting the construction and demolition debris. And this pile is huge. That's just one day of just the wood alone um, that is being landfillled from the construction and demolition debris activity here on Oahu. Uh, and as um, a- as many of you know, um, PBT land's application to expand the landfill in order to extend the life uh, and be able to accept more waste. Um, uh, it was basically uh, curtailed by uh, a change in the law to require a buffer zone between waste processing activities and homes, schools and hospitals. And so we've been basically, uh, been working for several years now on trying to come up with solutions to this issue. Too much waste and no alternatives other than landfill. So um, that's how Aloha Carbon was born. Um, it's a new project um, in developmental stages uh, to divert waste from the landfill and recycle it to fuel. What we've also had to develop along the way, uh, in addition to community input, was actually a lot of technical work. So we now actually have a patent pending process on gasification of construction and demolition debris, including treated, painted and glued lumber. Uh, in a way that actually traps the heavy metals and sequesters them to reduce their mobility to be able to leach out um, into leach it from a landfill. So um, we've actually got a patent defense with the examiner scheduled for tomorrow. So it's kind of going to be a busy day. Um, so anyway, so here's a, you know, pictures of some of the folks on our team. My company's small. We have eight people. So you'll see a lot of these same faces through this presentation uh, a couple of times. But uh, what we've been focused on is basically uh, moving the place where the trucks with the CMD come to from Nanakuli closer to town and to a more appropriate industrial area, basically Campbell Industrial Park. And um, three years of searching for an appropriate And um three years of searching for an appropriate site uh finally ended last week. I was able to get a fully executed lease for an almost five acre parcel um in the old part of Campbell Industrial Park to put our plant on. So um about our community input and, you know, sort of like what we discovered along this journey. Um, we started with a desktop case studies, taking a look at five bioenergy projects in Hawaii and then five bioenergy projects on the mainland and looking at which ones were successful, you know, actually built a plant and operated um and have community support, which ones were unsuccessful. Either didn't get the permitting approvals or had community opposition um or i- in other ways, didn't actually end up operating. So starting with case studies, um then with the formal introductory presentations, like the one we gave to you back in January twenty twenty-two, um a couple of rounds of online surveys, um several dozen stakeholder interviews, um including with Kumu Mikiala and um Dr. Dudley and yourself, and I really appreciate the time that you've given us for that. Um, and then we also actually did a little bit of inventing. We did a uh an actual community engagement pop-up tent, um like at the Nanakuli Night Market as an example. Um, so it was a little bit interesting, you know, being there with the food stalls and the food trucks and, you know, people selling jewelry and we're like, hey, would you like to give us your opinion on how waste is handled on the west side? So um but they seemed to be pretty well received. So um here's an example of one of the questions that we asked uh in the surveys as well as the structured interviews. Uh, it was of these different feedstocks um that we could convert to fuel. And feedstocks, I understand, is kind of a technical jargon term, but of these things that we could um source from Oahu and convert to fuel, uh which of them do you prefer? And basically gave it a five-point ranking scale. So um construction and demolition debris was the uh number one uh most preferred feedstock for us to convert into fuel, followed closely by MS uh MSW or trash, um just regular household trash. And um so we took that as kind of endorsement of um the track that we were on to try and do something about C and D waste landfilling. And so here are some pictures of some of the work that we have done um over the past year. So this is one project, for example, where we took four truckloads of construction and demolition debris. Um, actually, uh, you know, got a lot of help from Island Recycling, the West Oahu, where you get Island Recycling actually shut their car shredder down for an entire day just to grind this stuff up for us so that we could ship it to the mainland to do a gasification trial and test out that patent pending process that I talked about. Um, and that actually happened this past June, and we've got another one scheduled to happen in three weeks. So, um. Uh, going back to the survey, um kind of like the second most popular tier of feedstocks was invasive species, landscaping waste and agricultural waste. And in fact, on the invasive species, you know, that originally was not on the list for feedstocks, but in the uh interviews, that was actually the most frequently asked question that I and my team got was after, as we explained what we could do with construction and demolition debris wood waste. The most frequent question we got is, oh, that's interesting. Can you also do something about invasive species? Like invasive trees, coconut rhinoceros beetle, that kind of thing. So um that got me thinking, and so we decided to try and do some projects on that. So we actually applied for a grant from the Department of Energy um to do a test on invasive species, invasive tropical plants as a feedstock to make fuel out of because we couldn't find that anybody had tried it anywhere globally. Um, we actually got an award to do that and so partnered up with uh U H Lion Arboretum and who equal Mauleola and Papahana Kulaola to get um samples of fast-growing invasive invasive weeds, basically. Um, and um those are actually also on their way to the mainland right now for a gasification trial to go on in a couple of weeks. And then the other thing um that came out of that is that uh we realized that if we can um sort of run um the clean wood and the invasive species and the dirty wood from the construction demolition debris kind of in batch mode, then the ash from the clean wood and the invasive species is actually a really good potash fertilizer ingredient. So um we also did um some research and some partnering, including with U H College of Tropical Agriculture and are now doing a uh test to actually test out making an organic fertilizer out of the ash byproduct from the gasification process uh from the invasive species and a green waste and landscaping waste that's already generated here on the wall. So um I'm hoping that we'll have good results out of that. We're scheduled to do a crop trial um from December to March and then actually have data to give to farmers um coming out of that uh coming out of that test. So coming back to the surveys, uh another question that we asked was um sort of trade-off choices. So if you, as a member of the community, you know, or in this area, have to make a choice between two different things, what do you prefer? And um so I'll highlight a couple of examples. Um, so one of them um highlighted here is, for example, like if we have to uh if we have to do something with waste, do you prefer that we recycle uh and reuse waste on island or do you prefer that we ship it elsewhere for disposal uh and treatment? And um recycling uh and reusing waste on island was far and away the preferred of those two choices. Um, another example of trade-offs was um y- you know, kind of, do you prefer the status quo and keeping things the way that they are, or do you prefer putting in new infrastructure to increase uh efficiency and sustainability? And um the latter was um far more popular, a strong preference for new infrastructure and not necessarily maintaining the status quo. And then um the last question again, you know, can was uh an attempt to sort of uh understand better um the interests where invasive species are concerned. So in in this particular, in this example of a question, um we we asked, you know, uh if we could convert a certain type of plant material um from Oahu into fuel, would you prefer it be from invasive species or from native species? And there's a strong preference in that particular trade-off for invasive species. So um another couple set of examples uh where um there was a strong difference, um but not quite as stark of a difference um was uh uh another example of trade-offs is, do you prefer a small project using only locally sourced material that provides some benefit, or do you prefer a larger project that will provide a larger benefit such as higher amount of greenhouse gases avoided, but would have to import material to do that? Um, and um based on the case studies, um I was actually expecting that there would be a strong preference for smaller and more local projects. We're actually surprised that um large projects with larger impact were actually outvoted by the small ones, almost by a margin of two to one. Um, and um in sort of following up with different community members to sort of understand why that is. Um, it was because, you know, uh uh what was expressed is a need for there to be action on large longstanding issues like climate change. Um wildfire risk also came up, and this was, you know, months and even years um before um the unfortunate disaster on Maui um in August. And so, um, so, um. We sort of, you know, tried to sort of figure out how to take that input and use it to inform our project plan and and so broke Aloha Carbon down into kind of a smaller baby step project to get started. And then eventually, you know, we're going to keep aiming for a larger project that has a larger benefit. Um, another uh question for comparison is um, and we actually phrase this question a couple of different ways um to try and understand, you know, community sensitivity around technical terms. So when we ask people if they preferred combusting waste to gasifying it to make energy, um the community preference was for combusting rather than gasifying. But if we change the word from combusting to burning and ask community members, do you prefer to burn waste to make energy or do you prefer to gasify waste to make energy? It actually flipped. Uh, there was a strong community aversion to burning um and a less aversion to gasifying. So one of the things that told us was um to um that we have to do some community education on some of these technical terms. There is a difference between combustion and gasification. So um and I know we're at the end of time, so um. After a couple of years of listening, um and, you know, figuring out how to structure that to inform our project of what we're going to be coming back to you, um hopefully just within a couple of months, is going to be uh the draft environmental assessment for our new smaller starter project called the SMURF. And so um there's some pictures of what it's going to kind of look like. Um, just a smaller version of a materials recycling facility, and then this is a photo of what it pretty much will actually look like as far as the gasifier and um the actual site that we now happily signed for. So I'll leave off there and um here's our contact information. I can also drop it in the chat if anybody's got any follow-up questions or comments.
Mahalenui Loa, Drell Simon Pietri for being here this evening with us, and thank you for coming back uh in a couple of months um when you can come before us again. So here's a preview, everyone. If you have questions, please send it her way and that they'll make sure to be able to address them the next time they're before us. Thank you so much. And if we can cut the chair slide, we can get to our final business for this evening. Um, board, if you beg of the chair indulgence, um let's take up two items on new business. The one is a December date. If if there's no objection, let's us meet on December thirteenth, the Wednesday, the second Wednesday of the month. Is that agreeable?
Agreed.
I see Logan's.
I see Logan's hand.
Yeah, hey Chair, this is uh Logan. Uh, I'm not available on the second Wednesday. I have to be uh low on everything for me from that day.
I uh.
I uh, okay.
Logan, when can we?
When can we?
Uh, any, any Wednesday, but that would be fine.
We usually do it on the first Wednesday in December.
Okay, let's do the first.
Let's do the first.
Yep.
Okay. With with all the checks, all the checks in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Yes, all of them.
Any abstentions?
Abstentions.
So you're not chair calling it first Wednesday.
Wednesday.
The next item with.
Next item we'd like is to.
Set up a permitted interaction.
Interaction.
In order to.
In order to discuss.
Discuss. The Makikilo Quarry.
Kilo Quarry.
With the chair to.
Chair to be.
Dr. Kionitale. Okay. Of the permitted.
Of the permitted.
The room, may I, may I talk for a second?
Yeah.
Chair goes.
Chair recognizes the vice chair.
Vice chair.
Uh, I'll try to speak as I can. Um, when the people from the Makakilo Quarry came uh a year, maybe six months ago, uh I I told them, you know, there with the wall in the quarry is so ugly and you're leaving that for us after you finally leave the quarry. Is there a possibility that you can instead make it like Mount Rushmore with some kind of beautiful Hawaiian thing on it? And the president said, yes, and uh and then he left his position and somebody new came in. And so it dawned on me that, you know, if we're going to actually get that, we need to try to get it in writing. And uh so I asked if we could have a permitted uh a p- a pig and so that we could work with uh people and uh find out whom to contact and what's what's best to do in order to try to get that to come about.
Is there a motion?
Is there a motion to the pig?
I move. Just.
Move by.
Move.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
My second.
Second. The chair's heard a second from. Matthew Con. Okay, any discussion?
Discussion.
And any public testimony?
Hey Chair, this is Logan. I think the second one's from uh uh member Singleton.
Okay.
Okay.
No problem. It's their transcript.
It's their transcript.
Is there any public?
Is there any?
Volunteering.
Well, uh, uh, I mean, the pig.
The pig. Any board?
Any board discussion?
Discussion. The only thing the chair wants to know is who else wants to volunteer to be on the pig so that we can play with that we can play. All one time.
Um, sorry, I don't, I don't understand the fully semantic stating. I, I.
Oh, so, so let me explain. But a permitted interaction.
Permission.
Allows board members to meet together on a defined scope, which would be Makakilo Quarry.
Quarry.
And they report back.
Report back to the board.
The board. Without having to be.
Having to be.
So these individuals will be able to go along, go around, engage with all the necessary parties to come up with a plan to move forward for us.
Oh, something fine. The hell, or?
This is all.
This is all.
Makakilo Quarry, which also would in also do any discussions with Great Pacific and their parent company about whether or not we could do a more permanent urgency route or possibly um their support uh for
for.
Us uh Makikilo Drive Extension Project.
Project.
Through an alternate route. So all of those.
All of those.
Are okay to this.
Okay.
Regarding Makakilo Quarry. Okay, if not, here, you know, what else, um, I would name. Uh, after we establish it.
We establish it.
I would, I would name people on there because since you're not volunteering.
Not volunteering.
I will volunteer. The transportation.
Transportation.
Members to to help out.
To help out.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Okay, hearing none, hearing no for the discussion. Are we ready?
Are we ready?
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hands.
Raise your hand.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
On the same side.
Same side.
Any abstentions?
Any abstentions?
Or Kanalua?
Or Kanalua.
Sorry, I'm gonna.
Chair recognizes.
Chair recognizes to Kanalua and then and then calls the majority.
Majority. Three Kanalua.
Three Kanalua.
Michael Timothun.
Michael Timothun.
Uh, Mr. Khan and then Galan. So the.
So the.
Oh, never mind, just two.
Never mind, just two.
So I believe we have majority, but we'll check, we'll check Logan, okay, that we have majority.
For this.
Of the way Dr. Dudley as being. The chair.
Yes, Chair, we have uh with two extensions, everyone is here, so we have seven uh seven votes. Uh, just say for the permitted interaction group, you do need to have at least uh at least two board members on.
So we'll.
So.
So on it. And also.
Also.
The transportation.
Transportation.
Chair.
Chair.
For. Anyone else wish?
Anyone else with two wants?
Hearing none, um also the three members of.
Three members of.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Chair recognizes.
Recognizes.
Boss there.
Sorry, I know we're all trying to get out, it is late, but um I would be interested in helping, especially with the Makakilo Extension discussion, but I feel like I am not an appropriate rep- representative of the community to have that kind of input about building something that is for, that is represent a Kapolé, Makakilo, I.
Um, so I would suggest that we need to.
To the big.
Because all that allows us to have conversations with fellow board members regarding that topic. And we don't have to have a long time notice meeting.
Okay.
Because whatever. Still has to come back. For approval. Okay. So, if that's the case. Uh, I would also like to name. And you can come when you can come, when you can. And when you can, it's totally fine. Okay, so there's four members. Now, the last thing, the last thing is, is there any community?
Um, I just have one chair.
Chair recognizes.
Is there a way with the start the meeting at six thirty? Because at nine thirty, the AC noise goes on. So, if we start the meeting at six thirty, we can get out of here before the AC noise.
Is that?
Okay, um, that's the three, three requests, and I will take it out more twice. And get back to everyone. Six meeting, or whether or not. It will be agendized at six. Any other board committee concerns?
Concerns.
I'm just checking Logan.
Checking Logan.
Do we have to have board action to change it to six thirty?
Six thirty.
If, if. Papule Halei is available. Now, before we adjourn.
Yes, you would need, you need board action to change the.
Okay, can we?
Can we?
The, the, the motion so that six thirty, so long as the facility is available. Otherwise, it's seven P M. Would that be okay?
I don't understand the question.
Can we start at six thirty?
No.
Okay. Can I do, um, then for a motion?
It's not on the agenda.
Awesome.
You guys could add it, but.
Okay.
We'd have to add it by.
Excuse me, it is on the agenda because we are saying that we're going to have the meeting on a certain night and the time would go along with that.
You're just talking about the December meeting.
The December meeting, yep.
Um, yeah, I mean, you guys could factor that in, and if it's available, then I could uh, do that request in, but it would be up to, whether the space is available at that time.
Moving.
Okay, okay. So, so, I think her, the advice from the border assistant, I would entertain a motion to have our December six, six thirty, PM pending facility availability.
So moved.
Second.
As we moved on second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed?
Hearing none. Uh, chair calls it unanimous. And checking, and checking, did anyone want to like testimony on that?
I just wanted to say one thing about that chair, uh, the noise that started at nine, uh, just to be clear.
No problem, we'll, we'll try six thirty for December. And hopefully we can do six. Um, in January. And that December will agendalize the actual change of the times. Okay.
Okay.
Hearing no other.
Hearing no other.
Concern or board concerns. I'll entertain a motion. It's been moved on second. In favor, say.
Say.
About time.
About time.
Any opposed? By the same side? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the hearing has unanimous and we are adjourned at ten fourteen.
Well, yeah.